Yeah, yeah, see, we were always gonna steal it. But there would still be the meal stealing. Now wait up, please. Which England, it'd be fine if they give us some money for it, but they don't give us any money for it.
What are you doing? I'm good, and you? Doing good?
She had this, they had a CDC, they said that seventy-seven percent of people that were hospitalized as a result of COVID were obese.
Torpedo.
Yeah.
That was one of their criteria.
Oh, is it now? Okay.
Oh, which barn is that?
The only barn there. The only barn there.
Okay, where, Rui, where the big home site?
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Is it old? Well, obviously it must be old, but...
It's... The original building burned down twice, I think. Then they rebuilt it, burned it down again. This is built like the... Well, the farm, I guess, is over a hundred years, but that particular barn is, I don't think it's a hundred years old. The barn was built the last time, like, in the nineteen forties, I thought. They're saying the barn specifically, or?
Just no. Three-way barn. Three-way barn is a hundred years old.
Yeah, I said, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, no regard, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can you bring me a copy of that? Tim, I'll take it to Louis and just show it to him.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Guard me.
Need additions or corrections to the minutes of the March 2nd meeting?
I do have a tab of the agenda, I can save them.
Okay. Under motions, we'll add...
Hey, the captain wanted it.
I appreciate it.
Okay, second by Tim. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You should hear it. Public comment from anyone?
I didn't see something, maybe a public comment, or Don, the weed shit. Looked some stuff at Leland, but he got an old pickup box there. It's often nine-two-one, Tommy. Ain't good work on it. He said something about hauling it up, see if we could sell it. A couple other things. I just, my opinion, I bet this, it ain't, time we paid ten percent and hauling it up to the price I had, call up the landfill. It's not on the inventory or nothing. Last one, we got fifty-some bucks for it, time we haul it up there, so I'm just... Whatever, you guys, I mean, I told Leland I'd get old, I don't know.
Just the pickup box?
It's just the box, it's rusted on it. We should be, bought the pickup and told her to take the box off for his friend, so it's been there for...
You think?
Is there a...
Engage?
Yes.
And that's, it is one there, but it's got a... Not real bad, but it's definitely... But it's somebody, I mean, whatever.
It's part of sometimes looking for...
Yeah, that's a nineteen ninety-two model, right? So...
Whatever, I do.
What else we had?
I guess the other option would be to take it to the auction, but...
I didn't know, I don't have time for you to pay ten percent and haul it out there. I mean, you gotta get in and back.
There's something that can happen, is you'd have to load it back up and haul it out out there for scrap.
Think on it, and I guess it don't have to be done.
You wanna hang on to it? You wanna give it a try? Tell him?
I mean, I mean, get rid of it, the auction, but I mean, that tailgate...
Whatever, you guys, yeah. I mean, if you wanna hold it, the tailgate, we can hold on to, if somebody, everybody knows, somebody wants it, I mean, can't we?
No, they could make you those matches and stuff, I was...
I mean, yeah. Can you, just, I mean, that won't take nothing, just the tailgate, and if somebody happens to ask about it, we can sell it to them, then, or?
No, I mean...
Doesn't say Dodge across the back, does it?
No, it's a Chevy.
Nobody wants that.
It's a Chevy.
We could write down that, but... No, I just, I mean, I just thought, I mean, ten percent for selling, and he said we'd have, he wanted his hand to help, and I was gonna help throw it in, and...
Okay.
Maybe it's the difference to me.
I get rid of the box, I keep the tailgate?
Yeah, that's fine. That's, I, whatever you guys, I mean...
I wonder if Pat's gonna have stuff on the consignment options in the highway. Did he kinda say something?
You know, I spent an hour out there with him yesterday, wandering around that lot. And, uh... You know, there's that John Deere tractor that's sitting there. And I think most of the other stuff that's sitting around there is scrap iron type stuff, but we've talked about this in the past, there's a scraper out at the landfill, but it's... The longer it sits there, you know, the tires are gonna go to pot.
Bad, it's already dead already.
And years ago, kind of, we used it, the county used it to dig their own, dig their own cells, right? But that's, that's not in the cards nowadays, so... I think, to answer your question, there probably would be some surplus stuff to get rid of.
So keep the tailgate, and we'll put it on the surplus consignments sale.
Keep the tailgate, okay. Okay, I mean, uh...
Unless somebody can remember, we got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe you can bring it up to Pat's, and he's gonna haul stuff up, and you can do that.
Yeah, good idea.
Okay, well, elaborate more on my tour of the lot when Pat gets here, so... Other than that, anything else for public comment in here? And I see Dylan is here.
Sure, thank you, sir.
More than that, buddy, I'll come back to you.
Thank you. Uh, sure, it's me today, I don't believe I have anything new for you guys, unless you got questions for me.
Haven't heard nothing more on that one yet.
No, and I don't believe anybody's been served with it, so, until that happens, there isn't an active case, so...
There's a guy in jail with too much time on his hands. Is that what you're talking about?
I don't think he's even in prison.
Oh, is he? Okay, you know, okay.
Was it filed in federal court, anyone, or?
I, I don't know if they've accepted it, accepted the filing or not. I know, in talking with, um... Kay, I believe he had some sort of, uh... Reprimand against him for filing things in federal court two years ago, for filing federal courts, so I don't know if this one's even through that threshold.
Oh, okay.
If, if I hear anything different, I'll make sure everybody knows, 'cause the county's a named party, Jim's a named party. Uh, one of the previous state's attorneys is a named party. If I hear anything, I'll make sure that you guys know, right, Wes?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but it's actually a fairly quiet week.
That's what we like, dude.
Enjoy it while it lasts.
Yeah, they'll, they'll change it, it's nice weather, and next week's gonna be sort of hell, so, I don't mind.
Do you have a full court day today?
Uh, well, I mean, I'll be in there most of the day, but I don't have near any lone people that I have something.
Okay. I was just gonna say that either this afternoon or tomorrow, I'll get in touch with you about the other thing we were working on.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right.
You guys have a good one?
Yeah, it's good. You guys, thanks, Dylan. Jim is on the agenda, but is he...
He wants to be on the agenda this time, if he has something.
Okay.
Rather than with the sheriff, that was per his request, so, he's on there, I guess.
Ten o'clock is on the weather, Tom, Greg, and Seth, it doesn't work very good, so...
Well, yeah.
There's what he told me, you want?
Dylan, you want to read us on the abatement?
Oh, sure. The abatement is for... The, on a person's taxes, they should have, they should have had the veteran exemption, and it was an error that was not put on there, so, the property went from a hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollar value down to three thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
You yield a hundred and fifty thousand bucks?
Hundred and fifty thousand dollar exemption. So, we are abating one thousand, eight hundred and five dollars of eighty-six.
What, what does it mean? Qualify, is that a illness thing?
You have to be a hundred percent service connected. And then if the veteran dies, that dog extends, extends to the widow, too. And they just raise it from a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty, I believe, this last...
That's huge.
You qualify?
Certainly not. There's a lot more than that just a little while ago.
So, that, would that be a rollback to what it was at some previous point in time?
No, but yeah, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar exemption for everything.
The first, yeah, because the first hundred and fifty dollars was taken off of that.
So, the three thousand and something is, is other?
That's the new value, yeah. But that's the new value that we are taxing on now, yeah.
Yeah, I, I have an issue with that, but, again, it's interesting that the federal government decides that this is the case, and we pay the price.
Well, this is a state law, not a just state justice.
Oh, okay, well, again, the state pays it.
Yeah.
Makes the law, and we pay the price.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem right.
What makes them qua, I mean, maybe they can't talk about qualify, for me?
We have to be considered a hundred percent service connected here.
Disability?
Disability has to be related to military service.
Okay, okay. I mean, I don't know, I'm just...
I'm not, I'm guessing, 'cause I wouldn't be, I guess, thinking as hard as someone else makes the rules, we'd be worried, but... We can circulate that.
There's a bill on the dishwasher for about thirteen, over thirteen, almost one thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Another bill. I'm gonna say this again, is a time to look at a new one.
Yeah, we've put out money that last couple of years.
Yes, we have.
I suppose you get in that situation with, I'm just making something new that costs eight thousand dollars, like, oh, I can fix it for a grand, I'm, you know, I'll fix it, and then, next thing you know, you got six, eight thousand dollars, a thousand dollar repairs, you can't afford to get rid, it's like an old car, you're just nickeling ninety at death. Yeah, we should sure root that in the future, 'cause that, that's come up a lot. These guys drive up to Minneapolis to fix this thing? The labor, thirteen hundred dollar bill, eleven hundred and forty-four bucks, what?
They came from Minneapolis to fix the...
Well, they don't, parts came from Minneapolis, but I don't know where the repair guy...
Who did we...
It's called General Parts Group. That said, one eleven arrived on site, so I assume that's, that's they got an office closer by. If you can't build up, move it to Minnesota.
You a veteran?
No.
And then you had order parts in return. I don't know, don't see anything in it, but mild or anything like that, it just says labor, eleven hundred and forty-four bucks. Did you do any research, Tom, with regard to our, this guy called a taxpayer? Find out anything interesting, or? You mentioned his name and he hung up on you?
Oh, I, I emailed him first.
Sherry comes up here now. I left the bill in early last week, so I have to clarify something. I see she's hired a new zoning person. And she took over, that zoning person took over the office, what Jill used to say.
Yes.
Were we aware of that, or given permission for that, or what?
Forgot, I didn't hear the first part of your comment.
Sherry hired a new zoning person.
Okay.
That zoning person is sitting, where they sit across where Jill had her office.
Okay. Did she use the same interview process, this last time?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Um, within, uh...
Okay, okay.
My only question is, why would we have that person way over there? Why isn't she a part of the group? Where she can ask questions and, you know, learn? Get, you know, do we have a phone in there? I mean, whatever, I mean...
I see. Uh, Sherry's coming in at nine thirty.
Didn't she ask to use that office, or did she just take, take it over?
They're, I don't know, so...
I don't know, I know she had those maps in there, flood maps.
I thought we talked about, who you want to...
I don't recall where this person was gonna locate.
I, I mean, I just thought she would be with the group, because when they're out, you know...
She's not specific to, she also has other duties, right? She's just zoning.
You know, we'll have Sherry here in fifteen minutes, so...
You made a free turn of the time when we offered, sort of, hire someone that she had still often responsibility for that position.
Yeah, I mean, we asked, author is there to hire? My only question is, you know, I mean, she could just go up there on the third floor, you know?
She's so far away, and the rest of them, yeah.
You want a motion on this?
Yeah, warn her, something like that.
Just mixed in a dress.
Yeah, and that was, and that, when, I think, what happened when we got that bill last year, from two thousand twenty, we were thinking it was just one of the, one that we put a lean type thing on, oh, that was, that was missed.
But this is, we use county for juvenile detention.
We, apparently, we had a person down there, and they're...
Yeah, for four days, that's eleven hundred and eighty dollars for four days.
Well, she's juvenile, so, yeah. Where, where's she? What, which church?
Seven...
Hundred and forty?
Yeah.
I think, no, I think you... Juvenile is about twice the...
Yeah, it's, it's probably two something.
Four days at two hundred and ninety-five dollars per day.
Where's she's coming?
Here.
We got a motion by Tim to approve the abatement, on the subject of that, by Dylan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion varies. Thank you. Well, we're waiting. I went, I went on the line and I watched, heard of a city council meeting last night, and, um, I, I was on Zoom, and there's a bit of a delay, but anyway, I sent a message to Amber, who's sitting there with her, and I said, "Did the council take any action on the dispatcher contract with Roberts County?" Oh, this is, Dylan sent this one. I guess I didn't give you a copy of what I said, but...
Oh, I just sent that this morning.
Okay, basically the same thing that she responded back to me. She said, "No, it wasn't on the agenda. I let Dennis know that I would talk to Terry about it and get it on the April agenda." They did, however, approve the bills last night, which would include January, February, and March. So, that check will be in the mail today. Here's what she's got here, so... I get going. So, the condition was that they would sign off on a new contract if we got one proof to contribute, which we got with...
New Effington.
New Effington. Yeah, there should be nothing standing in the way, I would think. Except there, there are no Tyler's and... I guess they'll, they'll take the time to go to their April meeting and discuss it with them tomorrow. I don't know if we should go with, with that, but... Apparently, the council didn't have any questions when they approved the bill. So, make some assumption there, but...
It's just land law stuff, too. I did get that in papers, whatever.
Okay. Do we need action on this, or just for information?
No, just for your...
Oh, okay.
And then, and there's what was provided by DNR, Larry's drawings, on the books.
So, I got a review this past week, yeah.
Well, we're gonna go for a call for this, yeah. They got it approved by DNR. And I messed up when I sent, I pulled the wrong thing, what, I, yeah, I'm gonna do. So, thanks, babe, for saying that was August, a couple of years ago or something, but when I went to attach it, I pulled the wrong file from, from the computer. That's what happens when you, it's in this one, and then you add or change it.
What made you do it in jail, makes me do it in jail?
So, being here talking about that, and, so, it's, I want to question your waste cells.
The what?
The waste cell, you know, you know, I sent you that email where it was, where you had listed cell number two, and it was really cell number three.
So, I did, I, I got everything changed.
Right, but my question is, the last one you sent, it says, "For construction of amended waste cell number one and waste cell number three." This, this was the first one you gave us, and I questioned those different things.
Yeah, I know, and then I, 'cause that was from...
And then you sent this one?
Yeah.
And the first one, so, is that correct?
Cell number one and waste cell number three.
Okay, so, it's amended waste cell number one?
Yeah, yeah. And waste cell number three. 'Cause the other one was from August of, I don't know what year it was.
I can just read you the first paragraph from DNR. It says, "The Department of Environmental and Natural Resources is in receipt of three copies of the plans and specifications for the construction of amended waste cell number one and waste cell number three at the Roberts County landfill. Our office has reviewed and hereby approves the plans and specifications for the above described project. Our approval is contingent upon the following construction requirement." If anybody wants to read that?
And, you know, and from that, he was gonna release for bids, right? And then, what was the...
We sent that to the paper.
Yeah, and what, what did the bids get, came back by, or?
In August, or? I think I've got the copy of the claim right here.
April thirteenth, yeah. Now, for your cam check on this, I was not aware that they charged for this.
What was it?
CDP for COVID testing. Maybe she can call to make sure. And, and then, my, if they do, my next question would be, these are employees, so, does our health insurance cover that?
Okay.
What did they charge?
Hundred fifty dollars.
Did you do a COVID test?
Did a COVID test.
Usually, it was, it was three hundred, and then, so I got it for half price.
So, if they charge, then tell them, you know, our insurance company, 'cause he's on the insurance, correct?
Right.
They probably pay it.
Okay, all right.
Also, if they were really charging to get that COVID test, you could pull the money that's gonna be in the tests.
Yeah, I would question...
You not just hear any more of that, or? What, what cost or size, you know, there? No, no, I just wondered, someone, you know, I mean, learner, or, or, cost like...
I would assume, maybe, if these places are getting vaccination for nothing, maybe they're getting also, you know, a few birthdays, or that, I don't know, good question. I'll ask.
Dude, it, it sounds like it's quite a big deal to those who give them shots, maybe a lot of additional expense, personnel setup, and special rooms, and the whole process. So, yeah, they can't do that for you, wouldn't they?
No. We have the auditor's account with the treasurer. You wanna circulate this, Tim?
Thank you, Russell, it's got, um, onboard...
That's what, elections?
Yeah.
Running for what, see, council?
We have, we have, Jim is town assistant, city assistant. On, in two wards.
Which ones are those, then?
Urban Make Life, there, um, Tommy Randall is running against it. There's a Schultz lady, she's a teacher, OD, and she's running against her.
Against who?
Lee Silver, from, uh, the state, or, or Madrid. Yeah, so, Ward one and Ward two. She lives in rural landmarks, house.
Oh.
Two teachers at school, she owns the...
Well, this guy took out, that's him, he's driven that out, I don't know why, like, huh?
I think the mayor was up for reelection, too.
Really?
Apparently, nobody wanted that job. Was the mayor for the show, too?
Yeah, because Terry, Terry's the...
Okay. Apparently, nobody wanted that job.
The petition's already had to be canceled.
They've, they've been around, yeah. Who's on, people... Who's on people.
Thirteenth, is it?
So something for you guys, just for your information. The state has, is giving Good Friday, Easter Monday off to the state employees. And we can call soon if we want to. It's something that you guys can think about, or maybe last week, last year. We were closed in the afternoon on Good Friday. Giving everyone four hours. Just something for you guys to consider. Maybe I'll put it on the agenda next week.
What's the date of that?
On Good Friday.
Good morning, Sherry.
Good morning. I'm here with my new hire, Kim Schrader.
Welcome.
From Russell. His guest, Jim Johnson, chairman. John Carleton, Kay Johnston, Tom Forgot, and Tim Zempel. And I guess I'm here to ask for approval of my recommendation for hire for part-time.
Sure. Take that time? Okay, thanks, thanks, is there a second to that? Dawn, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you.
Be sure and let us know a little bit about yourself then. And what's your background and what's your interest in doing zoning?
So I'm interviewing Sherry and Tom and I come a little bit from healthcare background. I'm a physical therapist. There are, to make it long story short, I had a couple of different, I actually started as a high school teacher, but then I was laid off and so talked with a friend, got into physical therapy, did that for a number of years. And then moving out here was looking for other opportunities and thought, you know, zoning and as a learner and yesterday doing some training, very interested in working and trying to, you know, speed the process along. I also have, bring very experience since I was in the military, United States Navy Reserve, but I did get on that thing ago, so I spent a little third time in Afghanistan. Interesting experience while I was over there. Never, never, I only took my weapon off safety once. And didn't have to fire, so it wasn't anything like that mostly. And base, you know, mostly on base in either Bagram, Condos, which was near the Pakistani border, or they also said maybe the Assadabad, which is near the, also near the Pakistani border. So it was, unlike some people just get on Bagram all the time. I did get to get around and see some of the country out there, but never, mostly in helicopters, which never had been on a helicopter before. And that was an interesting experience. My very first full day in Afghanistan, I was individually augmented, which means I wasn't part of a unit. I went to one place, trained for a little bit, got with six other people, trained with another little bit, and then went over. So when I was first landed, landed on Bagram and they took us to the camp that we were part of. And then that next day, I was grabbed by the sergeant and someone else that like, oh, you're supposed to be out here. And so they grabbed me, said, oh, you're supposed to be in civilian clothes, you didn't know that. So I had to go with a PEX and buy some civilian clothes real quick. And then while we, everything was shut down, the gentleman had walked off the base, pulled the gun. So all normal traffic out to Assadabad was shut down. So the sergeant had connection that he got his own chopper that was going out to Assadabad that was going to be doing an op that night. And it's a Chinook, I'd never been on a Chinook, and it was with a SEAL team.
Oh my goodness.
So, but they're not doing combat at that point, but this is my very first day. I don't even know what's going on. And so it's nighttime. I got all my sea bags, like three sea bags of all my stuff I'm carrying with me. And we get on this helicopter, it's been hot all day, it was July. Get on the helicopter and it's nighttime, it's cool, but finally cooling down, the stress is kind of coming down a little bit. And the helicopter takes off, it's really cool, they have the back open, the moon's out, I'm starting to relax. And all of a sudden I see the, through the green lights, because everything's, they all have their night vision goggles on. I, I'm a reservist, I'm not issued that kind of stuff. So I can't really see totally, but I see the glare of the shadows of the people. I see the pilot and the copilot kind of talking to one another. And the guys, so you got a million dollar plus helicopter, right? The gunners are sitting on folding lawn chairs. And they pop up, the helicopter tips one way and all of a sudden boom, 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 boom. They're firing the big guns, it tips the other way, boom, 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 boom.
Oh my gosh.
I'm lucky I was dehydrated because it was so hot, otherwise I'd have. The sergeant must have seen the look on my face because he turns to me, taps me, he's like, here, they're just testing their guns for the op layer, they dropped those off, picked up some more SEAL guys at Assadabad. And then we're going off that night. But for my first full day, that was. Welcome to Afghanistan.
What was your job over there then?
My title is a electronics technician, but I actually don't have any wire in your house because they actually, I only read the manuals, the reserves are a little different, they didn't actually send you to a school.
Okay.
But over there with the position, I don't know how I got out of that, I had a clearance through a NATO unit I was in in the reserves. And so I was actually in intel. And we were doing like the first position, there was this box and it was like cleared equipment that basically monitored cell phone calls. And then the second job they gave me, once they do it, they get out of Assadabad because then once that was set up, they didn't need me there anymore. So then I went back and they're like, well, there's just not enough for you, I'm going to train you in another job. So I did a job with the drones where we, so it's kind of cool. Really cool how little the reservists from, to be a guy, managed to be part of the drone rocket. But our part was just to report data back to the secure. We had like three computers, one was NSA, one was the regular secure. And then we had one where they actually let us watch movies because we're on shift 12 hours a day and then your drone was flying out, our program couldn't work. Our program had to circle three times basically and find your cell phone signal. And then they would decide whether they would drop a missile or not. So very interesting how somehow I got into all that. And sometimes when I tell people, I'm like, they're not going to believe this stuff. I mean, I hit Admiral McRaven, who you hear on the news, I hit him with a garbage bag coming out the top cleaning it for one day. So that's the other clean thing.
Someone did use him for break, didn't they?
I was lucky because then I forgot this, you know, we're coming in, like our camp was no salute on Bagram itself, but when we got off our camp and then the main part of Bagram, you're supposed to salute and sometimes you're tired and not thinking, and he comes by with his two legs and I didn't pop the salute. Oh my God, I hit him with the garbage bag last week. My name's printed right here, there we wore our uniforms on Bagram. So I was like, oh, I'm lucky I'm not on your break. So that's a little bit of, sorry to go into that long.
Oh, that's interesting stories.
Yeah.
Sure. Good.
Good story.
So yeah, so yesterday I was mostly just reading the manuals, doing the administrative manuals, making sure that she knows the 2019, but not placing against the 2005. Just because we were at the 2019 and you got to make sure. So if I have that 2005 up here, I can say, well, it's this, and she's going to say, no, sure, it's 2019 and this is what. So, you know, we'll have close communication through everything. I think it's going to work out very well. She's in the room where Jill Fisk Harris was in that, often to that, where we're there, where we have all the flood maps, the FEMA maps and stuff. So there was a gentleman in yesterday that talked about FEMA with me, so Kim was right there with me and all the FEMA stuff that I had to say. So she's picking up a lot of stuff very, you know, I think Kim is going to be a great asset to the zoning.
Is she going to be in that office permanently? I mean, I guess my thing would be, she's not in with the group to hear, you know, everything that's going on. I mean, she's isolated, is that your intent to be with it?
Yes, my intent is to have zoning over there and that's where everything will happen. The zoning will be between her office and my office, it's just a doorway. It's fine, we're going to be having the same, the phone number for zoning is going to be the same as equalization. They're coming, venture communication is coming tomorrow just to hook up that extra phone for us. So we will be able to have close contact, she will, it will work out very well. Because having all of her zoning stuff into the equalization, it's just going to be a lot of extra confusion and this sort of thing. I think it's somewhat separated.
Was your intent not in the future, if everybody's out, she's going to be answering?
Yeah.
Okay, so to me, to overhear what you guys are doing would have been beneficial.
It is beneficial and Kim will be brought in on all the conversations that need to happen. And she will know about where we're at, what's going on, she will be taking as much improvement. And then in the same aspect, that if there's going to be zoning questions, the zoning questions are going to be all sent over to Kim, Kim has the best of the same conversation. So she's going to be, you know, first responder to zoning. And then she'll come to me with any other, you know, conditional needs to make sure we have everything like we may be. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Do you prefer leaving part of the team or she's part of the team that goes out for the summertime things?
Yep, Kim will be part of that within, working within her 20 hours if she has available time to do that. And then going out and doing building inspection, Kim and I will be going out there or Kim and Lisa. Because we need to have an assessor out there, plus why I also want Kim out there to do, so she's going to have.
Would you, I'm sorry, would you still be hydrated, two people though, for the summer help or just one and Kim?
Well, if, I haven't really thought about that yet, just due to the fact that Kim has 20 hours, I want to see what the zoning is going to be coming up into doing. And then we might have to do two summer help, but I think we might get by with just the one.
I would imagine at that point she'd be able to work more closely in the office with Lisa and.
Right, right.
And Patty at that point doing that type of work.
Right, because as of right now, I want to be the one who's going to be training her into the zoning stuff. I want to make sure that we are following the guidelines that we need to do. Yes, so I do, I think Kim is a very good asset to our program.
Yeah, keep Kim involved with the hearing that we have coming up.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And she will probably be up here solo on the 23rd of March because I will be on vacation halfway.
Do you have an idea what your hours are going to be, your regular hour, is it kind of 20 hours scattered throughout the week or?
That's what Sherry and I were working on yesterday, trying to come up with the days that are the vital days before the third of the month of the mission, so I can help with the minutes and then help get ready and then that stuff. So kind of some set days there and then kind of working on spacing it out and staying within the boundaries of the 20 hours. They get two, one week, three the next week, but it could fluctuate and I have flexibility to fluctuate and meet the needs that she has.
Perfect. Sounds good. Probably wouldn't hurt either to take some time and give her a tour of some past projects, particularly our wind project that we have for wind.
And you know, like yesterday was her first day, I got, we're just going to, today now we're just going to start talking about building process and just going through all that. So with her training, it's going to be, who will go through everything that there is and she will be reading the past minutes of everything and whatever condition I'm used to. I will throw the three binders after, of the wind towers here after a while.
Yeah, sure.
Or just give her the total, say, there you go. So, but yeah, so those are some things that, you know, it just takes time for her to get into herself. So the month of March is going to be pretty much her training time and then we'll just continue to work on that. So Kim, you have a question? I've got another question. All right, other than that, we don't have anything else.
Hopefully you'll enjoy it more than I did working on this because I sure didn't have any fun with that project. We spent a lot of hours here with Todd Keaton, I'm sure we get to know real well. In the future, work on this and it was. Every time Todd Keaton was like love hate relationship. You want to see, if you want to get this done, it's like a long afternoon or so. But no, good luck to you, appreciate it.
All right.
Nice to meet you, Kim.
Bye. Go this way or that way?
She was nervous, surprised. She's been through, she actually tells me. She doesn't even, she's very capable.
Sounds like, yeah.
She'll grasp it.
I wonder at some point, how is that turned into a full time job? I mean, I don't know, she would say that.
I kind of, I didn't want to say it from Kim, but I discussed with Sherry, I said, I don't know if it will or not, but you should keep that in mind that maybe that's a possibility, whether it would be full time, don't know. Might not have zoning.
Sure, exactly. But see, like, a lot of people can't afford to work part-time jobs, so.
I think at this point, from what she said, she really doesn't want to because they have some building projects they're working on trying to get located here. Maybe when that's done, she.
She lives on.
Yeah, I did, I just looked at her resume and stuff, resume looks familiar. I asked, I said, where do you live? And she told me that's my brother.
She said she was from Dubuque, what brought her up here, just relatives.
Yeah, just her. Her nurse is my niece's doctor, so they kind of moved here to take care of people, care a lot of the problems going on. I think they decided to stay.
Well, that's Pete's daughter.
Yeah, and she works, she's worked at home for years for Casey Nielsen. And so, well, she's still been working there, she's lived many hours. We're all many.
You know, it sounded like she had a lot of.
Yeah, I think she's really good.
That's great. Events can reflect the system being circulated. Is there a motion to approve that? Kim? She got a second, didn't she? All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Beezer.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good.
Must made some progress since I talked to you last week, yeah? Does Dawn share with you that that plan got approved? We got a partial notice of that or?
Uh, Steve did, Steve dropped.
Oh, Steve, okay.
We got the notice for all the bids, I got that in the paper.
Okay, yeah, he said he wants a control bill, authorization to start getting one of the. And then August 13th, do they let?
He's out here for a minute, so he's hands up for his own. Sure, he wants to.
Yeah.
To his taxes, I'm not sure what he pays when he told she. Jump out here as soon as he gets up to the phone, that's all right, yeah.
He wants a motion.
Very wanted a motion, he said, to accept and start the lead bids and then do the pay letting on April 13th. And the construction being done by August completion.
Did you want to? Can you get all of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Dawn.
Let's give her a simple visa.
Kim makes the motion. Tom seconded. Any further discussion on that?
Do you need a new cell?
Man, that's good. It's up there, yeah. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Do you have an extra one of those?
Okay, what you got?
Thank you.
Well, actually, customers are actually doing pretty good. We finally got some of the entities to step up and get some money from them. Got a couple little ones left there. Number eight, customer eight is down under the single digits anyway. So there, that's all, I said, pretty good. And then there's just that car sanitation that's still pending.
Did the crusher come in yet?
He got a piece of equipment. He's got a desaster here. So he's getting that. Said, yeah, he should be here this week. I can't hear my dad.
We got a pickup box that we need to deliver to you out there. Weed guy, that's an old one, Tom, well, you know, he ain't worth it.
I also did get the proposal from Geotech that needs to be signed on and it's just a contract for their services for the year 2021. If you can just sign that and have it set off.
Have you got it with you today, please?
Any motion on that too then or?
Yeah, we should have authors. Somebody want to make that? Tom, thank you. Second. Sir, second to the motion, Fay, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by the same aye. Motion carries.
My $2,021, so every five years we've got to do a permanent renewal. So like, we're going to have that done by May 5th. But I'm pretty much done with that. Dog dropped it, dumped it already. And I just got to go to Geotech and just get a little updated plan of what your services are. So I should have that done back in the line from Geotech. Be excited today. So I'm going to call that, just that there. If your signature is required, she's around here. Is that permitted? Other than that, being planned, good year, all that good stuff. The season on there, probably all gone tomorrow.
In your snow boots. What's that track called, you know, that guy, Crusher?
That's the guy, Crusher. People got in variety, I believe, with that on tracks. So he should be here, he said this week, and I say, I mean, Sam, right, he says, I don't hope you're ready.
I was there last Tuesday for a while. Somebody had hauled down piles of wood and Jesus, all the outs are getting more room. I guess I give you credit for what you're doing.
Save room when I can, you know, take them home and go wash, you know. It's hard for me to talk to the construction waste and there's garbage.
You can see you pick off the wood and saw and raise the garbage.
We're blurring too. Baiting anything else, but I was in there scooping it out and hauling the wood. You did a good job down there.
Hopefully we can get this reconstruction done. Still have the little room in the cell to finish off while we put, we'll have to put a layer of garbage on the bottom of the new cell right away because they're wet conditions. So we're damage controlling the road, we're controlling the line from the bottom. So hopefully the other side will probably get that done. So we'll finish that. We'll be doing closure here on stage two and three shortly. And then there'll be four and five probably this fall next spring. And then some of that acreage money or post closure closure money. I think we're going to have to reduce that load because we have quite a heavy pressure right now compared to what they're going to have on the new cell.
So we can reduce that down, huh? Do we save it?
We might be able to.
Okay, because we just raised that here recently, didn't we?
We still have stage three, four self-in, and then, or two and three self-in, open to four and five. So that acreage is all, has to be able to close it.
Sure.
While when we get two and three closed now, we're going to put a gap on that. Then when this fall, four and five, we're done. We're out of the goals, so we don't make any rain for the new garbage cell.
Right, so then that was all, maybe that that number can go down?
Yeah, it should, it should go down, it definitely won't go up.
Yeah, okay.
Is this my coffee on?
Yeah. I haven't seen your husband for months.
Other than that, we're just following along.
Beez, you ever foresee a need for that land scrape that you got parked there?
Yeah, I'd like to see a lot if long as it's there, but, you know, there's times that we could do some of our homework instead of. You know, when we start now, we should be looking into getting a new acreage that we bought to West up there, doing some soil boring and stuff like that. We get that permitted procedure, so we can start using that when we need. You know, we're probably going to have that four or five years in our new cell now. But, you know, ease it in, just spending a little bit of time instead of having all one lump sunk. You know, I can talk to Keith too right now, today, when I get back, you know, ask him what we do and how slow, process we can make it to stretch this out over three, four, and three for that new acreage. We don't have, I don't think they have print forty, this is 160 acres on it. You know, we can just do that first forty in, you know, only twenty acres, that's going to be, I don't know. Forty wide, maybe twenty wide. Get this, we can use them now. You know, that would be another, that would be another 20 years plan, putting, you know, just get that.
But back to this one.
We could, situation like that, we could start moving back there. We could start, you know, getting.
You know what it'd take to get that thing running, you know?
It's something in the back refinery area. I know last time when they took it, it was going on highway in the back, we were in there, it was smoking right down front of them. So they had to stop and pull it up, we passed a lot of it. It's got two dry sizzles, one in front of the back, so they just had to drive it back to the landfill just using the front end. But other than that, I think it was in good shape, good condition. Now, even if we don't keep it, it's going to be worth a lot more. Up and running.
Yeah, that's true.
We just sell the scrap iron right now.
That's just it, the tires are deteriorating and, you know, every year that you know. Well, we needed to bounce that off you to see what your feelings were.
Yeah, it's not a weakness, it's a feeling, you know. It will provide its services once needed.
It's been four, five years.
I don't know. They were really late, they were from landfill to try to look on and just haul it work. Do some shoulder work and call it. I mean, they were starting on highway, it's like mellowing out of the back end. And so they just brought their back and pulled it back. That's a lot of it. I don't know what they're talking about. Well, I'll have to get out of here if you guys don't have another question. All right, are you full of anything?
Thank you.
So they're saying on this disabled veteran plate, you have to be 100% disabled for that?
Physically, I'm not mentally. I don't know which one you can use.
I don't know if it's going to work, but we're going to. Let me check with Andy over here. I'll just figure that out. Steve, Andy's here.
How's it designed now, please? Good boy, a bit smaller. Bring the cattle in there. Bring down the cattle, serve the pasture. Keep going down, Doc Sherri. That old guy is bugging me. Man, oh, you heard me.
I saw you talking to him, but I didn't know what the conversation was.
Over the small acreage. He's eating some of his old boy, bringing cattle over there. Yeah.
Live there.
He's a.
How do we sign the paper? Buck seventy-nine, we're waiting. Yeah, yesterday for gas.
Two thirty-nine?
Buck seventy-four.
How can that be?
They raised it yesterday morning, buck sixty-nine, they raised it down to seventy-six today.
Two, probably two.
Two. Sorry.
We got to cut the mill bank again.
No, no, no.
Okay, seventy-nine.
They raised it up to ten thousand. I see.
I think we're still at that.
And then I see out there crossing at two fifty-five.
They might just kind of slow the change.
Probably my luck when they do it.
Pat, go there?
Yeah, he is.
Ready for him?
And we got a big, these all in the sheriff.
Does anybody have an interest in going out to the, out to the site, out to the highway department to lift that over? While I was out there yesterday, I told Pat, I said, get four stakes and mark the corners of where you'd like to see this building. So I think he did that. And the way I looked at it, over that lot drains about three different places. And I said, if this new building goes on the west side, there's going to be additional water on that farm ground. And I said, we got to be prepared to have proper drainage there because when you start running water on farms improperly, that's going to be a little good. I was just telling them about our visit yesterday when we wandered around the lot out there. And that that lot drains in about three different places. Probably the best, the best location for that new building would be along that west side. Like we had visited.
As long as it's built up and where the drainage can be brought back to these, because we got our drains ready. Once the whole thing is done, then hopefully.
The thing we'd have to be really, really careful of is that any of that extra water that would come off the west side of that building would land on that farm ground.
Which, like you're a drainage, that's. Some of that drains anyway. We don't have a lot of drainage in it right now, you know. Other than that, that goes off. We're a little higher.
The drainage that occurs now, none of it goes.
None of it goes there earlier.
It all goes a little bit to the south and everything to the east, so. We'll keep being directly handicapped.
Oh, okay.
This is that, well, will, will it be turned on, this is ten, this is the other over.
Okay, this, this is, this should be where the, the new one would be.
Okay, alright.
And this is the handsome farm ground.
Alright.
Yeah.
This is that.
Oh, okay.
Don't want to get the drawing too hard, because I just drew it together real quick, just to get an idea.
Gives you a good, uh...
This is a state shop, um, did you get it done? Anybody get a picture? That's a state shop, I took pictures of this morning, I took shots of them way a long time ago, and then I didn't, I'd have to go out there and run out there today to do it again. This is an example, I got the dimensions, and then I got the dimensions on the other ones, on that. The only thing you have to contemplate is, you know, it's, the biggest issue is the size. Now, that size, that the state did, they didn't re, they didn't build new, they just rebuilt it, it cost about a hat, you know, I don't know if it was close to a million or what they had into it. But they tore everything out, like to remodel them, and they just remodeled it, put it all back together, now it sounds like they're gonna do the cement this year. Well, they got all the cement they could have, that they had, but it's all broken up and there is. Well, why wouldn't they do that at the same time when they got, so they redid the whole outside doors, frame, and then... They welded everything back up, because it was rusted.
Three, four years ago, maybe, four, five, whatever.
Just a couple years, you know, than it was, and they had, you know, that's a steel frame.
Yeah.
Went around the steel frame, whatever, and, and it all rusted, so then now they went and took everything apart, all the insulation, all the walls. I mean, it was all wide open, if you remember, when you went by there, it was completely wide open.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they just went and re, did the walls, re-insulated, re, uh, found the steel, they had to re-weld everything. Re, uh, you know, sandblasted, re-welded, and then repaint, so, I mean, basically, they could've just all did it all, for one day. Now, this front here, these doors are a little bigger than our doors, that we have, if you look on the top of my, uh, my great drawing on that white piece of paper. We have seventy-eight feet, uh, in length with our, just our new shop there on the lot. That's basically where all of our trucks are in the winter, what we keep in the winter time, and we have the wash bay there. We had to use the wash bay this year, put a truck here, because we haven't had enough room. But luckily, we've had the, one of our loaders in the wintertime that we have, we have two loaders, and the one usually has been off the line. But when a typical winter, we usually don't let him use that other loader very much, and we always usually have it in the yard.
How many trucks can you get in the, the new shop?
Right now, we can only get four in there. Because see, each one of these doors, we have to double up and back in, so we're backing in one trunk, and we gotta back the other truck in, in one door. Because our doors...
Oh, you have a single door?
Our, our doors aren't wide enough, see, these doors are wider, they're sixteen by fourteen, and ours are narrower, I forgot to write down on my new one.
Yeah, if this, the existing shop, you could imagine, there'd be a truck, the front end of the truck would be sitting right there in between the two doors, in order to make everything fit.
Where are you from, this new building, can you still access the wash bay?
Yep, we're, on this diagram, you see this distance between here and here?
Yeah.
That's enough distance to be far enough back to go in and out of that wash bay in the corner and get out this wall right here.
So is, this drawing you gave us, is this where the fuel pumps are?
Yep, this is kind of where it's located as is. The only change though, is where this new building right here, it's two different lengths. You got one with six doors and one with nine doors, that means you can go farther down, you can get your lock and belt.
Did we not talk about, um...
Yes.
Moving that, the, 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 um...
There's a, the MC tape that we have for hot oil sitting right here next to the gas right now. And that would have to have like fourteen or twenty by fifty pad made, so that we could back that big tank on and keep it all the time on the smother. And that would be the containment stuff for that, for that tank. Right now, this whole area, right here, this whole area, from here all the way around like this here, is all swamp, ready right now, it's a bunch of water. And what we do is we have to, once that dries out, bring in clay and compact it, and get it all real nice and hard and, uh... Make this all one square piece and have it all, so it's one nice garden.
Second question would be, is there any regulations that you have to have these fuel tanks so far from buildings or anything whatsoever?
Not that I know of, no. You have your propane that has to be a minimum twenty-five feet from your house, so, all this stuff is a lot farther away. This picture looks the most true of everything is, in real life. So if you went out there right now and drove around the yard like Dennis did, myself, if you get more of a, a utilization of what this looks like. Right now, on this diagram here, I moved the culverts over here, and I put the sander, um, carriages over here. They don't take a lot of room, but it looks close on the paint. But if you went out there and looked, you'd see that building would sit here, and you'd have enough room to drive out, you'd be far enough away this way from the gas tanks, and then you would just, you know, like you normally would. The ramp, we will not move, we just redid that here last year before, and we just redid that, so it's a lot higher, stronger. And the sand pile, when you go out there and visualize, this can be, it's, there's plenty of room to get around it right now.
What are we thinking about existing shop area, is that gonna be tore down or what?
You would, you would tear this all down, and this would be all parking, and then we'd have our trucks. See, in the summertime, we have all of our trucks parked here.
Okay, that's what I mean.
And it gets pretty congested, but you could park trucks over here too.
But if we got rid of the building, can we use, this looks, can we utilize that area for some of this stuff?
Yeah, that's the whole question, I mean, here's the deal, right here, from this building to here, to Highway seven hundred, it's only forty-two feet.
Right to the edge of the road?
Yeah, to the, where it drops, now, to the roundabout. See, right now, we have the, one of the shortest, oldest trucks in this wash bay, car in the, in the tire shop in the warm area of that building. That's the only thing that's worth anything, you know, other than cold start. Because then we can, you know, the, the truck needs revving, at least it could start out every night. It's slow anyway, but when you go in and out of here, it's the shortest truck we've got. It's only forty-two feet, forty-five feet to that edge. So when you come in and out of it, you gotta come in, you gotta come around like this, because you, this roundabout has cut off, or you're not ready to look at this.
How long is a truck with a plow on it and everything?
Um...
You just ballpark it.
Uh, I think it's thirty-some.
I was gonna say about thirty-six, forty.
Thirty-some feet, yeah. Towards the end of the seventy sides, and then the plow in the front, it's thirty-five, thirty-six.
Okay.
On a longest Vegas trucks. There's two of them, the older ones are shorter, and three of them, the, the old water truck we use for our plow truck too. That's sitting outside, because we don't have room for it right now, because there cracks here, it goes in every night. But in the wintertime, no, we had to use the wash bay and put one of our trucks in to it. And this is just kind of, you know, a picture to look at to say, well, yeah, this will work out building over here, and, you know, the drainage goes here towards seven hundred. Everything drains in the middle of the yard over here, goes to seven hundred, you'll see that.
The tire shop?
We would do away with the tire shop if we were to do away with this building. Because the fact, when Don brought it up, I kind of looked into it. Basically, all of our tires that we have, the spares, we have a lot of them, but we would put them somewhere, and then when we, when we need it to fix, we would have a spare, we can always break down the tire down and make a fix on tire on their own time. Because we usually have front ones, we have re-treaded and brand new ones for the back, and we have used ones and new ones for our blade for backup too, and those all, those would have to be moved someplace. We don't know where, because when you go look, you'll see why we gotta have, we have those bigger buildings, so we can utilize them all at once, and there's an option too that you can look at. This here's got thirty-two to forty-four feet on the other side, going to the fence to the west where we, we shop. If you wanted to build another stall there, you could build, because we don't use this all the time coming in and out of the wood, but if we had to close this off, you could put another, uh, bay here, and then we could have our tires, our cutting edges, our barricades, or all the other exercise, put out from here right there. Otherwise, we got no room.
So that stuff could be pulled story?
Yes.
Okay, so would there be, if we got rid of this building, you would move the tire someplace else, but the tires and, you know, barricade?
We don't have room for them now anywhere.
Okay, so my question would be, would there be room to put here, like a trailer, a semi-trailer? You know, on the ground?
Or steal something out of there, yeah.
Yeah. You know, put your tires in there, your barricades in there, your cutting edges, whatever.
Uh, cutting edges, we have in the back here, we want to move down, because we need the, I mean, if you add that tires, like something like that, yeah, that could be, that could even be back here somewhere, here or something like that. But it would have to be lowered to the ground, so you'd have access in and out of the building.
So if you got rid of this?
Unless you want that to look kind of tanky, be an audio or someone here sitting out there.
Side color is, it's silo siding or whatever?
It could be.
What would you, could you utilize this space for something there?
Well, especially in the summertime, all of our equipment is parked out here. And then we'll be able to use this too. Because you have all the people parking back here and around this building, right now, employees, that's where they park. You just park that and all the equipment out here in the summertime. In the wintertime, is where we want to have everything in a, in a place. There is a lot of extra stuff here in the wintertime, that's why. It just looked like that much more space.
Then how much, how much space is there between the existing building and where this proposed new building is, what, what is that distance?
Well, when you and I were out there, I moved that farther to the south.
Right.
So, um, oh, I'd say close to sixty feet, sixty-five, I have to be accurate, I didn't try to do that again.
What building is this?
This here is a building in Millbank that I shopped the other day, just for you guys to have a concept of. We would not have all those little doors in between.
Service door.
Then we would not have this, pardon me, we would not have this distance, we don't have a distance. If you look at that one there, that I gave you this morning on the first photo, this is more of what we're looking at far as the way the front doors would be. See, they only have a door on the outside's coming in, and then they have doors in the back. See, this building, this building is seventy feet wide, yep, so they got their tools, they got a little more room. Ours is only fifty-eight. Ours is only fifty-eight, so when we back in, we got from that wall to that door opening, about maybe a little finer space is all we got to walk around in that building.
Where we doing?
Where our trucks are. And so it gets pretty tight. And the one right in our old shop, where we have to back in, right here? We, our sander sticks in the entryway of where our air machine and our shocks are, and our welder. So you have to back completely into this entry of that tool to get the plow. We have the plow, and we have the pop kit, and we have one of our loaders inside the old shop, you can order. So we can pretty much, yes. So when you look at that, you say six doors, well, six doors would be very minimum that we can build these. And then depending on the depth, see, we only want fifty-eight feet wide, not seventy. But if you go seventy, we'd have to measure again, because that would be getting pretty wide, then you'd be getting in trouble with trying to get in and out around the tanks.
But if the primary purpose was the storage of the trucks, why, why would you have to, why would you look at anything larger than fifty-six?
Why would just the trucks, because we have a blade, we have two, um, blades, man, there's, we have two.
Oh, all those, how long are those?
All those, one and the whole end.
How, how long are those, quite long in a truck center?
Yes, well, they're about a little bit longer, they're about the same, a little bit longer.
Maybe about forty-five.
They're a little longer.
So at fifty-eight, you could still do it though, right?
Yeah, we, we still put it in cold starts at one, and the other one we have to set outside.
The blades are how, can these blades be forty-five?
Forty-five or fifty, I had that side at fifty.
Like an overkill, is it?
Yes, for us, I'm just showing what they have.
Forty-five.
Ours is only fifty-eight.
Okay, alright.
Ours would only be the same depth as what we have in our old one.
Alright.
We can get by them on fifty-eight feet, but we have to go longer because of how many pieces of equipment we have to put in.
You should just take the pictures of a couple lumber yards and say, well, X number, I think I'd be surprised if lumber's over a hundred forty percent high.
Yeah. Everything else is going up to, even electrical and light.
Deal is about half, I think, for lumber. But I'm a hundred, I'm in favor of putting it wrong, but I guess it's just an estimate.
You're sitting down when you open the envelope. That's another question we talked about too, do you think we, we need them, like, uh, Fulton, you need to do this fact, and receive the bids, and be ready for the project? Or do you just say, you know, Joe Blow?
Well, no, I think if you have a company like Morton or Folks or something like that, say, what, what, and, and really, you know, you're having the first guy do the majority of work, but then, then you got something to work off of, is that, okay, these are the wall height, the wall thickness, insulated this, that, and this.
You got this book, you know, by what's that?
Yeah, either ten or ten or more.
Yeah, more, yeah.
That's everything that we, you know, we gotta talk, you know, you gotta...
I think our local backyard should be, so you can do it.
Well, I guess you get a bid for one of those, because they're, they're pretty poor. Oh, I just wanted to be like, in a lot of shops, when you're just built like, you're a carpenter, that's what you do, you build houses, like whole buildings, you're gonna say, you, okay, you will build this. And then he says, oh, I know a guy that does concrete, okay, I'm a plumber, I mean, that, what we, what we do, like, kind of manages ourselves, and saving that material, he was supposed to, or to target, or, or let's say, just go into...
Yeah, see, these are two ten thousand, get them, take them.
Did they do all that other stuff, or they also, they also have people that do?
Roger built the gas, all ground, the gas tank, double out of all.
I'm sure they do act, as, as they generally do, some of the, the technical and maybe the concrete as well.
Piece of equipment.
No move at all. We used to move on the lower, it sets right here right now.
So could that be something we don't move, we leave over here, and we can still have parking?
Your thing for fire, uh, yours is?
Before the construction.
A little cement slab out in the middle of nowhere, right, too, right? That's kind of, we set all this in the area. It's only ten thousand, down, take a middle of this, or a little somewhere. We used to set it out of the way, they're honest, you're using this, or...
He's no fool, he's, you know, he's, I, this magnitude, you know, but certainly he feels, you know, has shops. He doesn't, he's cool for that, he says that, maybe the guys like him.
Like, yeah.
Yeah, like, who's a big guy, you know, brother, or a big guy, and all that, and that.
Stop, construction, he deals all kinds of tools.
Who is?
Stop, construction, he deals a bunch of weird too. He's got a bike one on that. Or it works for Bateson.
Who's that, Nimitz? He's a, he's a, he's a valley shopper, Nimitz, I think, is that his?
I don't think he's been busy enough to build a full one.
And if you look out there, there is a corner bit of room, but it is congested.
Could you want me to slide in?
See, there's quite a few.
And then it's all, it's built up, the trucks are.
Crawling, they're raw.
You have floor heat and overhead heat as well, and if you're doing floors, it'll help people, like, or is it a gas boiler?
Trees, conservation.
I think, I think what you're gonna find is that second picture over there, the heat, this is probably what they're gonna be advocating for, which protein.
We use that.
Oh, sure, yeah, I think that's what they're gonna try to advocate for.
We did some, did we do that as well?
Our plows can sit there, but now we.
So did Fred, right? It's like a, it's like a shower around it.
Yeah.
Where's this at? That one is over a building.
Six doors.
A what? Building?
This would be way open, we would put all of the stuff over here.
We don't need all these buildings on.
No, I was just, just an example.
Yeah, I mean, you get pictures, take it someplace and see.
Three, four, five, six. You know, what is, what is plan number?
Then would we want to take all the sanders off, bring this?
Six bags. In that dimension of building, maybe a little under nine thousand fourteen, and the one that you're carrying down.
But I, I didn't think I would put it there for future, for future, for things.
I've got a feeling, I'm seeing things on, to do that size of building?
Where, which, what was this?
I think phase one, quite, quite.
From the west to the east.
Sure, in terms of getting your trucks in.
Kind of eliminate the tire.
Well, you can see what's out there, it's, we're taking everything away. Right here, they have a.
That'd be big enough, wouldn't it?
I, I would think so to start with, and. See how you can get.
Six doors like that, I bet you, what, what was it?
Just right here that pumps into here if they ask.
Well, it's all said, none of the three.
All of that.
All of that.
That's good, that's a skis.
Right now, again?
Don't get me wrong, but.
No, no, I, I think he just, the biggest thing is getting rid of the big icework.
But I think we, can't make, me, I cannot make a decision on a building over there. That's why we talk about water tails.
And this is all drainage.
Yeah. Decision made, that's one.
Yeah.
Right, it's all right here. And we pump this out.
For tangling.
And it goes back here.
I'm waiting on those because of.
No, because. You know what, these houses, that's for our field trucks, oil tanks.
Again, this building is a one seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yeah.
This is about nine thousand.
And then you're eliminating a big part of this, with the tire shot. Well, they do hard the truck in there.
Seventy percent.
That one's got all of the walls, we have to end up with water. Breaks up your lot real wide. Just to exit. Got all of them. Like, just work, then you have more of them going. You worry about. This way, someone's going this way.
Across here, some of them.
On the old chapel.
We have to run into this one, probably.
This you could drive way straight in?
All your drainage.
Have to wait. Every truck that's on the door.
I would say fifty foot wide.
So that would be drainage.
The water should be.
Finding this, he can measure.
Yeah, might be a little short on the forty-five foot lanes, but.
The water, the heat, and the guy.
Measure, have a deal. What do you think, Chairman? Get some, just roughest, biggest?
Well, I, I think a, a good place to start would be to contact some building contractors, we, get some names where, after the.
I can do that, I know everybody in Tom and around the area.
And then, and then Morton and Foltz, that specialize in commercial buildings, barn buildings, that sort of thing.
Well, you got all many lumber yards, you got big, you got the one going on, you got a couple in system.
Three right here in Ravens County, yeah, yeah.
Ask them all, I mean, that way you got something to go on.
Well, I think the thing you have to take into consideration too, I mean, one guy's gonna quote you, what, eighty inch steel, another guy gonna quote you sixteen inch steel. So we have to have some, some kind of spec together, maybe something like that comes from we dealing with.
I'll see why you can't have a spec book right here.
Foltz or the, or the, and then mimic what.
Book right there.
You just go by the old spec book we had and go by salon that.
Oh, that's for the, the new shop that you built, the new one?
Well, yes, that's right with that, but.
See, we have all what we really need right there, I mean, it's just have somebody draw it up and put it on.
The door is a little bigger, don't you want them then?
You just gotta determine how big you're thinking and how big and wide, and then you, well, you can't design anything, you know, exactly. What you're looking at.
Right, I guess I would do is measure, a true measure on the road grader, because that's gonna be the longest, what's, V plow and trunk, from front to back, I mean, so you know why.
Yeah, see, you know, and the V plow, with that on, we can still fit, you know, fifty-eight feet is still sufficient for all pretty neat.
Fifty-eight, so it doesn't have to be about sixty foot now.
Yeah, well, ours is actually fifty-eight, and then you get the walls on, you get the tin on the outside, that, I mean, that's exactly what that gun is, that's what we.
Rodney, his, his.
You go by sixty, they got seventy, they got ten feet wider, see, so, but, you know, you're gonna have to touch your space, you know, that's neat.
Did you stake out the corners so we could visualize where this would be located?
I staked out the one end, yes, for the longest end it would be, so.
On the north end, you staked out? Or which end did you?
Yeah, from the north to the south.
Okay.
I got two stakes.
And this is one of the corners?
Yep, right where that corner is.
So we, we got a, a good idea of how much swing it would be to get in and out of that washroom.
Yep, yep.
Right.
Hope working, practically building the lot.
That is great. This here, I'm trading two, right here is a fence line. Fifty-eight feet of.
So if we, if we do less than fifty-eight, it's gonna make a difference over there in the washroom, too.
Well, that's far enough away with down that.
How many washrooms?
If you come on with this building, it's far enough away, it's a snow tube through there anyway.
Is this, yeah. Probably not ours.
That's not ours, that's the, that's the field.
That's what I, Kiel was in the office, so sharing.
Yeah, that's all, farm fields and cornfields. And we got room to move it to the east, but this is smart.
Is it a highway commercial?
I would think so.
You got a piece? Well, this one has got around yet. Positioning.
No.
Yeah, we gotta ask about that.
So we got, you know, the six doors would be, when I measured the first structure, would be twice the room of what we have right now. That's why that seventy-eight feet is double there.
How big a doors are you talking there?
It'd be the same size doors as we have, but if you went to six doors.
I don't appreciate.
You're not gonna have the two breezeway door, I mean, where they're located exactly, but we took the dimensions, I did a seventy-eight feet, become that's the total distance of our new building. And all they did is take that times two, because then you'd have six doors, it's the same, it'd be this double of what we have for the first part. The second plan would be if they had another three doors, so, again, of course, you have to get way, it's longer way bigger, but if you went to six doors, like eight, kinda half connections, that'd be, you know, all right, too. Whatever we get in, we get out, I guess the rest of the shit's.
Are they sixteen feet, are they sixteen feet, um, what, what we currently have?
Ours?
Are they?
Ours are eighteen by fourteen doors.
Fourteen wide.
Fourteen wide.
They're eighteen wide and fourteen high.
Oh, so these.
That word counting, do we have to abide by?
You have to, we got, the total, you know, is twelve and a half, twelve and a half. They're ours, they're eighteen by fourteen, and that's what I measured on the state. What I measured on the state today, too.
Sixteen by fourteen?
Or sixteen, yes, I'm sorry, ours are eighteen.
Okay.
Ours are a little wider. But see, we back, truck in, here, and we have to move into the center, like.
Yeah.
And then we have one straight in, then over here, you gotta back in and come over here, or over up that here, and then back this one side.
We wouldn't be doing that, we'd be driving straight in, back straight out.
These would be straight in now.
So when you get by with a sixteen foot door, you still need eighteen foot doors?
We'd want to go eighteen, that brings it out, and if you don't, if you have a problem where they hang out a little bit, you got to deal with it. But you guys can decide now, but sixteen is.
We don't wanna be banging and stuff up.
We've already got.
You gotta have it right there.
You gotta have all these there, and you're taking a precaution, obviously, you'd be there with eighteen and fourteen. That's why I want with this dimension on a new building, too, if you had six doors, it's just double this.
Does insulation, everything in there then do that, what kind of insulation you want?
Yeah, this is all insulated, you know, and then tin on the inside, tin on the outside, it's, it's just your basics.
That's ten thousand dollar.
And this is four thousand.
I mean, really?
Four thousand pounds, you know, per square inch for cement, I don't know how thick it was, I don't know, but it was all in there, so. You know, this is all designed and put up at one home, the back in seventy.
What year did you build that?
Ninety-nine, ninety-nine.
Well, then just take that to.
The old building was seventy-five.
Yeah, how much did that cost in ninety-nine? Did they have prices on it? Oh, okay. Oh, I don't need the prices on it or something.
This is the diagram of the front and back, you know, what we got. The after.
You guys won't visualize.
Is that enough information there? A lot of info, is there enough there to give? One cost estimate?
I mean, it says insulation, tin, he said, and everything on it, so. Don't forget the. See what they say.
That's where we put our cold mix in the summer time.
We'll listen to that, Bob, I'll.
We'll talk ourselves out of it if we keep going.
This is not your building, do we not have anything that could have hidden that, called that, Bennington?
Not at that time, I don't think, because we had.
Doesn't it, okay, not at that time, but we could have?
Um, during this, this is when, February, we had all of our trailers tied up, and we only have one truck that pulls our trailer out, and it's scared steer, and the prong. And the semi we had, I think the semi and the trailer was all full of snow and froze up, so I don't know what the significance was that, you know, had to have all up there.
Well, I would like, yeah, six hundred dollars.
Go in, you'll lie in there, I mean, lights and a handful of outlets got across, I mean, you'll need a lot, do you?
Tom brought up a good point.
Here, that's crazy, zoning's gotta be twenty feet for the lot, so that's move that building out twenty feet.
Twenty feet from the field?
Well, maybe more, because if you're, if that fifty-eight feet of floor, you're gonna have a overhang of a couple feet, a couple like that.
Yeah, you got the overhang.
You got, you got, maybe you have to move it out twenty-two, twenty-three, whatever you go.
From our line.
Well, tell them to move the conservation building first, and then just.
I think, I think maybe, maybe what you're gonna have to do is change these around and do your plan one down here on the south end of your lot.
Well, our first needs, are you a hundred percent sure that that fence is on the line, on the line?
No, I haven't made, our fence has been there for fifty years.
Yeah, but maybe needs to be surveyed.
We're gonna have people come and look at our fence, but not survey, but I can survey it.
Dude, it won't take much to find them pegged, would it?
Oh, I don't know. If you had somebody like Morton, or if I had somebody else come up to find it, otherwise you'll never find it. We gotta have, have somebody come out.
I think we need that. We need that.
And then to find out right away, because we've already had, I mean, the conservation said right on the line, and our fence line's been there for years. You have to go back a little bit, because it ran off, or maybe Hansson's don't give a shit, and you can have it built there.
Who, who?
Frank, Hanson, Gary Hanson, I think Climes.
Oh, I think.
I mean, it's just a little, a little bit of water running off of it, like the rest of it. Yeah, we'll get that all settled before you get in.
Because he's maybe a good neighbor, but if he sells, that doesn't mean the next person's gonna be.
Yeah, exactly.
We need to know for sure.
If we're gonna ignore zoning rules, we're gonna force them to put something up.
Yeah, exactly.
Good point, huh?
Like you said, like Dennis had mentioned yesterday, you just need to go out there and visualize that, fuck it over, and do whatever your thoughts are, that's, fuck you this.
Well, I guess I'm gonna wait till you have it surveyed, that could change something.
And I think, and I think we need to have something, look at a lot of it, if, if we're gonna fill in something, get the drainage, the drainage door, it needs to be, I think, definitely done.
We can pull out of that, too. Just gonna have to dig a pipe, you know, three, here's to the drains there, and that's.
Are you still ready to jell it or something? Yeah, I don't think, are you still a jell it?
Yeah, that's.
I'm worried about filling in some of this. They have a drainage, so it still doesn't drain.
See, a lot, none of those really are free drains.
Pretty large cement, cement, stain stains.
Well, I'd say, well, that's gonna drain somewhere.
They have a large drain sitting on it.
Well, it all would fall.
All of that needs to be done.
I don't have to go up here.
Count, count here, Sanders.
Well, that's, somebody. See, that's the forty.
All of that is to be.
Where are you doing that?
Reset.
We're not having great poss.
They can do that with the back or stuff ourselves.
Yeah, we can see our salt shed, all the salt.
Very time consuming, that's, it's a lot of prep work. You'd be lucky to get everything done in the summer to do a construction.
I guess I just gonna, might see rough, see how bad they're gonna get us.
What the, what cost per square foot is to put up a.
They don't want, maybe they don't want that.
Shot, yeah.
So they don't want everything right here.
Be well over a hundred dollars a square foot.
You have a slope lot right here, and then we're just gonna. Yeah, we just make a ton of law, and then we have a runway there, so. I mean, that's easily all that can be done, some aside.
Sure, there you go. Five feet, huh?
Now we have five minutes of the executive session, if someone wanted any more personnel.
All right, there's motion by Don, is there a second for that? Come, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for executive session to discuss personnel. She's gotta move this stuff out of here.
There is the jail census. We are at about forty-six.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry. It's all right. Uh, right about forty-six, so we're down last, from last week, by about four. You know, the biggest, the biggest thing right now that it seems to be keeping us from having more inmates coming in, um, is having the, the way our jail policies are right now with, you know, people coming in under the influence of, um, being legal throughout, things like that. We usually have to house them up front for about forty-eight hours prior to putting them back into the population. Um, and that tends to be one of the things that's bringing more people into our facility right now, more than anything. And it just slows, it slows the speed at which we can get more people into the facility. We have to have them up here for an hour before we can put them back into the population, so we're turning people away. Um, it has, it has been happening on, on occasions. Um, I just talked with, uh, James, uh, this morning, the jail administrator, this morning, about some things that we can do to make sure that that isn't happening. As far as, uh, when we're dealing with multiple inmates that are under the influence of the same, suspected under the same illegal drug. We can use a detox pod to put them into, you know, a hole in there at the same time. So we're gonna utilize some things like that, so that we're not running into any scenarios where we turn the people away. Um, and in fact, I instructed him this morning that if there is, for them to turn anybody away, they have to contact me prior to, prior to this. There shouldn't be any cases right now. I don't feel that, that we're, we're turning anybody away within our facility. So that was the instructions I gave him this morning. Other than that, I want to, um, I'm not sure that if it was something that, that we were involved in or not, with some of the new renovations that happened in the, in the courthouse a year or so ago. But I did just wanna bring this and present it to the board. It was something that came in address to the sheriff's office. But it is a grant opportunity for updates inside of the courthouse. Uh, whether it be some security, security-based updates, like panic alarm buttons and things like that. Um, it looks to me to be like a fifty-fifty type grant. Uh, and it just, it just outlines the money that they, that they had put in, uh, a few years prior to this, and that there's still money available, and they're, they're just reaching out to see if there's, um, some courthouses that still are looking to do some things like that. Uh, they talked about panic alarms, um, they also talked about, uh, like courtroom security as far as, um, a metal detector outside of the courtroom, um, some different, different things like that. So I just wanted to present that to you and, and let you guys deal with that, but, um, I don't have anything to do with updates on the courthouse, but that's your guys' business, so.
Just, you said metal detector. Now, you've got both seconds of, I mean, it's police whatever, do you think, drawn to the courtroom, there should be some, has anybody ever?
I, you know, I don't know of a lot of courthouses in the state of South Dakota that have them, except for probably some of the bigger ones. You know? So I don't, I don't, would it be, could it potentially stop something someday? Yeah, it could potentially, you know? You know, it's always a security issue. I don't know, I don't know, I couldn't tell you at courthouse it does happen. I thought he did this, didn't he? I thought they did something here recently, in the last year or so with some metal detectors. Maybe not. You read the papers, too. You say, you say, yeah, I know, but, but I thought that they did something not too long ago.
They updated this new court facility. This, this probably wouldn't pay for that anyhow because it's ten thousand dollars maximum. These are pretty, pretty expensive, I guess.
Fifty-fifty, I believe is what it is.
Yeah, it's only ten grand available.
And then if we did have one, you'd probably have something. When it gets to a hundred percent, let us know.
I just wanted to have that as your word of... The only other, the only other thing I have for you is that we were, went and got our, paid for our two Tahoe's last Thursday. We brought one of them back. We already have it outfitted and ready to go. The only thing, the only thing that it needs now is to get its graphics on it so that you know that it's a sheriff's office vehicle. So everything else is ready to go.
Running good?
Yeah, it seems, it seems to run really well. The only thing that it might need in the near future are a new set of tires on the front. But while we were there, while we were there, you know, they set us up with... They gave us two cages to try and utilize as well. They're not cages that are actually for, for a Tahoe, but they're for a Chevy product. So we're going to try to see if we can somehow manufacture them to utilizing the way we need to. They were brand-new cages and they said, "We don't need any more. You guys are more than welcome to have them." So they really gave us that stuff.
Good job, Cotty.
So we took them, took them back and they told us if there's ever any equipment that we feel like we might need to reach out to them first because they're happy to help us if they have to. So the one is still there and I have it marked in my calendar that you guys are going up there on the seventeenth. So I'll get you the, the address and everything. It's all paid for, taken care of. They'll, probably will be filled with gas. They don't seem to like to do that, but... Yeah, so, and then we also picked up the Dodge, just brought the Dodge home. And then last Friday, Guardy brought our Chevy Silverado back, picked up the Dodge. So the Dodge is getting outfitted now. And the Silverado just got the graphics, I think, put on yesterday. So that, that vehicle is on the road now. We'll be looking for some rides here, so.
Tyler, do they, do these guys need to take those bill of sales along? Would that probably be a good idea? So when you go down and pick up that?
To pick up everyone?
They shouldn't, they shouldn't need to. All contact, all contact the highway patrolman that, that does the vehicles down there. He, he knew, I told him that one of the commissioners were coming up here on the seventeenth when we were picking it up and I'll just call and let him know that it won't be out there.
If we get the last six numbers at the end, we'll make sure to get the rest one.
Yeah, yeah. They were, they were just getting the old graphics off it the day that we were down there. So they were getting it set up and they got the other one kind of cleaned up as far as the wiring and stuff. So they, they had it pretty well ready to go, so we're pretty happy with it.
All the lights and everything?
Everything, everything works. It's already, it's already brought some people to jail, so it's, it's already on the road.
I don't mean no ride.
It works, so.
Like buying a new fishing boat. Just jumping?
We need to declare those things as surplus too, is that what you want to do?
Yes.
Any of them, Ron?
The... Not well. One of them sounds like it has a, they, I believe the last time it was checked out it had some issue with the exhaust manifold system. They thought that was going to be a pretty expensive fix. Another one has an issue with the power steering, which they thought was going to be a pretty expensive fix for a, for a vehicle in the shape that it's in. And then you have the vehicle with, with the crash damage with, you know, two hundred thousand miles and, and, you know, eight thousand dollars worth of damage to the front end.
So it's, it's time to... Seven. We've got a 2013 Ford Explorer, we've got a 2015 Ford Explorer and a 2017 Ford Explorer. Their motion to declare those surplus vehicles, send them down the road. Motion by Don, second to that. Tom, thank you.
We just advertise them in the paper like we've done in the past.
That was my next question. What do you guys want to do with them now that they're declared?
Do we have to pull all the police stuff off of this?
There's only, there's only one of them, only one of those that has any police equipment under it.
Is the graphics gone on the side?
There's only on the one. Only on the one.
Well, see, there's so many advertising, see if somebody wants to.
Yeah, otherwise that auction's coming up, people...
Signing the sale.
Signing the sale, yeah, deal.
Do you know on the salvage company as well? Something about that?
I, the, the insurance adjuster that was up here mentioned a salvage company in Aberdeen. And he, he thought, he estimated we might be able to get somewhere around the area of two grand or more for those.
How much?
Two thousand. Yeah, that's the still there.
So that's for all three?
No, for each one.
So about two thousand for each one?
I think a total of six.
So I'll call, I'll call with them and check. I know, I know Cody Wallace said that if we did need to get him up there, he has a car trailer. He'd be willing to take him up there for us. If we needed, if down with the direction that we went.
Be, be worth a phone call, Tyler. And as long as they're on the phone, Nordstrom Auto, I know that they'd come up here and, and work with the insurance companies and take, take the total of vehicles they come out of. Is it Brandon?
They do a pile of them.
Ah, that sounds, that sounds right.
Then why yourself?
Very. All in favor of that motion signified by today night?
I agree. And then the other thing I have is I did go to Summit last night. I met with the city council down there. We visited about, you know, kind of the talk of them combining their three resources from those three communities into, you know, funding another deputy for Roberts County. They're interested. They, I think the, the, you know, we had that twenty, broke twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars would be their contribution yearly. I think that may have sounded like a, it may have sounded like an initial large jump for them. But there was also a lot of community members that were at the council meeting and it sounded like it, like it landed pretty well with a lot of people in the community as far as them, them feeling like they do want more, a lot of enforcement presence up there. And they all understand how big the colony is. And then with three deputies, it's just, or four deputies, excuse me. It's just, it's a lot of ground to, to cover, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. So they, we kind of left it at, at the fact that I still need to meet with Corona. I need to meet with the school board in, in Wilmot next month. And, you know, I did talk with the superintendent in Summit and they're interested. They're interested in what having some law enforcement presence at their school, what that could do. And I talked to the, the city council and stuff about what that would, you know, that they would potentially be able to contribute to that and then what it possibly looked like and how we kind of start to get that number chewed down a little bit to make it less of a burden on the municipality. And they understand that. A big thing right now that I'm waiting for too is for the cops grants to come out. They're not out yet. Typically around the April timeframe is when they, they start to get presented.
Did you talk to First District over there?
Ah, no, I haven't. I wrote that on my last...
I was just going to mention, we spoke, we had a conference call last week. We spoke briefly about, he says there's different kinds of grants depending on what you use it for. School, different sets of monies, drug enforcement, different sets. So apparently to find out upon how we want to use them, it might be different.
Right, right. And see like the cops hiring grant, the hiring grant that came out a year ago, that was for get, I'm sorry, to get more officers out on the streets. And, and they gave away almost four hundred million dollars in grant money last year. So, and when you, when you pair in some of the things like proactive policing and getting inside of the schools and trying to prevent, prevent bad things from happening, you become a good candidate for a lot of those, for a lot of those grants. And looking at the one that was out last year, the staffing grant, it had a maximum, it had a maximum of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per that, per employee. And then the typical contributions are, you know, year one, seventy-five percent is paid by the Department of Justice through the grant and then the county or the municipalities would be the other twenty-five. And then year two is fifteen, fifteen, and year three, you know, they'd be picking up that seventy-five percent. With the, with the hope that, you know, they're able to budget and, you know, long-term be able to, be able to budget for that, that officer. And realistically, the goal then at that point is for the communities that have seen the impact enough to say, "Hey, yeah, you know, in 2020, we had a hundred and fifty calls that came to Summit. You know, in the last three years, we've seen a drop by, you know, fifty percent or thirty percent." And then that's up to them to decide, "Hey, is it, is that, is that twenty-five thousand dollars that we contribute, is it worth, is it worth it?" Or do we want to say, see later to our officer who hopefully, ideally by that time has established himself enough in the community where he likes being there, they like having a... So they, they were going to... It's just, it's safe to say that there was a good, really good conversation and they were going to start having that conversation with even their, their businesses in the community. It sounded like they were going to reach out to the coffee cup, the owners of the coffee cup and see if they did decide to jump on board with this, if they would be willing to help them out, help the municipality out, so that it didn't become just on the municipality's path there. So that's where that's at. Next stop is Wilmot School Board. That'll be, that'll be your home.
I'm going to assure you, or wherever I saw in the newspaper that Grant County's looking for another deputy. Their starting wage is going to kill us.
Yeah, you know, I don't... You know, it's something that we're definitely going to have to contend with, you know. My, my hope ultimately is that, you know, we really are making a really good effort to try to reduce a lot of the overtime and stuff that I think has probably been seen in the years past. We're doing, we're trying to do a lot to decrease that. So hopefully at the end of, as we get to the end of this year, we look into kind of the last quarter, we can start looking at that and seeing if the efforts we made are worth it in looking at those, at those deputy wages and making them a little bit more comparable across the state. I know if you look at the sheriff's survey that comes out every two years, you know, if you look at the deputy wages across the state, we're definitely in the, in the lower...
Rant starting wage is certified, twenty-three, forty-five.
I mean, it is.
Huge.
I think you also, you know, apples to apples. Yeah, our wage needs to come up, but we're, you know, we help insurance and that's like three dollars and seventy-five cents a month, an hour, excuse me, that you need to add on that. Plus we have, the most they ever pay out of their pocket is six hundred dollars.
But that's, but that's going to be every law enforcement agency across the state.
Everybody, everybody pays a hundred percent health insurance?
System PD does the same thing. Their wage, their wage is just over twenty-one dollars an hour. So, you know, and it, it, you know, the thing is, is that... You know, they're the guys that are out there when everybody else is huddled up at home when, when the snow was blowing and it's forty below and they're out sitting on the interstate, freezing their butts off. And they're the ones when everybody else is sitting down for Christmas dinner or out, you know, dealing with somebody who's, you know, putting them through heck. And, you know, it's a, it's, it's tough to convince somebody to look at a career in law enforcement when, you know, they can go and work in town somewhere for nearly the same, the same wage. You'd like to be able to convince somebody to get into the career of law enforcement and to be able to make a, a career. And the wage, the wage just kind of has to reflect that at some point that, hey, yeah, I can, I can have a family and, you know, be able to, be able to pay for the things that they, that they want to do considering all the time that I have to leave them and not be there with them. Because it's just a little bit, it's just a different career when it comes to that.
And I think anybody here would argue with you on that point. It just really comes down to the money and where it's from.
Yes, yeah, and that's, and that's why, like I said, and I, I know it, I know it is and I, you know, I'm not advocating for just, you know, throwing a number out there just for, just for the heck of it. But to, to look at it, really kind of compare it with some other, some other, you know, counties across the state and just try to find something to make us just comparable. So that when they, so that when, if you're looking at through law enforcement agencies in the northeast corner of the state, you're not putting us last or kicking us out of the bucket just because we have the lowest wage. And when kids are coming out of school, that's one of the things they look at. You know, and you're right about the insurance. They, they don't think about that. They, they don't, they don't consider it. They don't think about retirement, you know? Those are, those are huge, those are huge things that they don't, they just don't realize. But if we don't, if we're not comparable, they'll just miss the boat on us. They don't even, they don't even realize it. And we're one of the, we're one of the best counties to come to, to get law enforcement experience. You know, no matter, no matter what direction you want your career field to go. And I hope to really, I hope in the future that that's really the direction that we go with, with the law enforcement here is, you know, people come here, you know, if they're coming here as a stepping stone, it's a stepping stone to something, to something bigger. Not a lateral stepping stone just to go into a different department to be a deputy somewhere else. Hey, yeah, this is the stepping stone to get into the DCI or to work my way into the highway patrol or, or to start my career in law enforcement, so.
You just got to get them deputies and marry local girls.
Yeah, that part of it.
That didn't help.
That's right, yes, I forget. I forget, he moved. But that's, that's all I have unless somebody has some questions for me.
I have a couple of little things. Our jail administrator was new. I'm sure he'll need his time to get up to speed. Did I think last month was thirty-seven hours overtime? So I hope that can just go down a little bit.
Yes, it's something that I've had multiple conversations about. And part of it, part of it's come to the, they were really struggling on their overnight shifts. They lost some people. They were down to two employees that were working nights. And he was, he was trying to get other people to come in and do it. And if they weren't able to, he came just to make sure they could get through the night. So I, that was, that was part of it. And we've got some, we've got some, some interviews set up. I know he's done three or four already. I think he has three or four more to do. So we have some, we have some prospects for some new employees on the jail staff and that should make things a lot easier for them.
I think we could have some more come in too. Some additional ones that came in on the police squad, so.
We did have a jail that would kick the hours overtime out. But I know you guys are short, so I'm not going to kick on that.
We also have that inmate up in front of the facility overnight for the thirty-hour thing where they're setting them in.
Yeah, we had, that was, we had an inmate that was, and he's been held with us right now. We do have him mentally incapable of appearing in court and, you know, some things that he has going on court-wise. And he had a medical condition where he needed to be taken up to Fargo. We had to sit with him twenty-four hours a day for at least three days that we were out there. And that was tough on us because we were, we were a short staff and then we were sending our, we were sending our employees up there sitting there for twelve hours at a time.
And I think those were the employees that have the more hours overtime.
Is that one of our homeholds or was that a contract?
Yeah, that's one of ours.
And I imagine it was mental health, so he couldn't be bonded out, cause I think, you know, they did that in the past.
Yeah, we tried that. He's being held by the, he's being held by the judge, so we, we tried that. Uh, we, I even tried to contact them up there. You know, Sioux Falls will a lot of times send somebody over to do, to do security at the hospital. I talked to the, I talked to the sheriff up in, uh, Cass County, and they just said, we don't have the staff to do it. Um, we tried every option, tried to figure out a way around it, and we just couldn't, just couldn't do it. And ultimately, uh, the state's attorney said, no, that's the case, and we just have to, we just have to do it, so.
Saw bill come through today from Lewis Truck for about forty-six hundred dollars. And it's about three thousand dollars somewhere last month, and sixteen hundred dollars for this month. Basically, and three briskers. I don't know. I assume our nurse okayed it, but.
Um, I guess I'd have to look at.
I mean, and there's nothing they can do about it, but it's just, you know.
Well, that's one of the ones we're just talking about.
There's, you know, a couple supplies for the jail, you know, but isn't there a second page on that too?
I think she has it up there.
Okay, all right. Did you, did she check on?
She's, between her and Janessa, they're going to check. We have, we have not paid that bill, but we don't have that bill. And we need the names of the people who are on there so we can put leans on it. So Janessa and.
And I know this, I know this one is getting a, uh, uh. Somebody's taken over his, his guardianship, um, so he's probably actually going to be leaving our facility at some point soon. And then that might be something that we can do then is, is, uh, talk to the, the guardian about payment of these, of these fines. He did write a bad check in the jail, um, for, uh, yeah, some people's kids, uh, wrote a bad check in the jail for commissary. Um, so I put a hold, I put a hold on his account, and, um, I know James reached out to that guardian and said that when you come to pick him up, he's not getting out until he pays the sheriff the hundred dollar bills and the commissary. The other one's gone to the, gone to the pen now. Uh, and the other one, I'm not really sure what. But I, when, when we do get those, I have, I have, uh, James go through all of them and make sure that they're, uh, if any of them are supposed to be marshals or, or denouement taken off, they're marshals and billed to the marshal. Um, we just got one that I dropped the office morning that had two deferred revolting tests on there. Something for the marshal service that they have to, that they have to do, so just call them and give them a bill off for that.
And again, I assume that if they're tribal members, we can, we usually can help them go through.
Yes, we're, we're doing that.
Definitely.
So, he is, he is aware of those. I, I give them, I give them to the jail administrator every time. He'll come in and he, he goes through them with the call, and then tries to make sure that we can bill out when we can. We do try to do that.
Don't bill me, okay, for another deputy.
I know.
Yeah, but, but we have no choice, you know, right now.
And I, and I, I know our, our nurses, she does her best to try to make sure they're getting what they need and what they need.
So they will probably also be getting a bill from this guy.
Uh.
Haven't gotten it yet.
Yet, but I would assume at some point it would. That's all I have.
So, um, we've been dealing with the, these two projects that we have the line of pro Q A on radio software and radio operating. We came across a major issue that we got, and it is going to be with the server at the sheriff's office. Um, it's kind of a dual issue between these projects and the actual sheriff's office systems. Um, we're running out of space on our server, and our server is very old. They said it has to be replaced for, you know, probably since it's moved over there since the system got set up. Um, and he said it's in dire need as well. So, instead of having to replace the server in the next year for the sheriff's office, basically we should look at, and this is coming from both the healthcare company and Connecting Point, we should look at doing a joint upgrade. So that way we can kinda go to words with one stone. Um, but obviously it's gonna cost a little bit, and this is something I, you know, obviously I hate coming to you guys with a bill like this, um, cause it is a big amount, and you're all about trying to cut budgets, you know, cut money off the budget and stuff, but I do feel like this is a very, very necessary upgrade. You know, we've got, luckily we've got a lot of this grant money to cover these two projects, you know, the radio upgrade itself, and that would cost us a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And ultimately, we have to pay about five grand out of that amount. Um, everything else was covered thanks there. The pro Q A, you know, fifty-eight thousand dollar project, and we're looking at spending fifteen on that. So, um, and it's kind of a big amount, but like I said, it's, I do feel like it's a really necess- it is really necessary for the pro Q A. It could also for the sheriff's office, cause it has impacted our work there with the server being pretty much maxed out at capacity, and it being older. It's slowing down the function of all of our computers as well. So, um, I've been kinda working with them. We've been, I've been nickel and diming our mountain down with them, trying to get it to the most reasonable amount, and, you know, telling them, even with upgrade, and in that fourteen thousand, I did mention that too, we also have to replace one of the computers, um, that's included in there, cause it has to be something that's gonna be a stationary, um, computer that's, it also duals my computer, but, um, they have to be able to remote in at any time, because, well, the way that computer works is it's going to be my computer to do my normal work, but also to do the review on this stuff for this pro Q A software, but they double that by going back and actually reviewing my ability to review them. So they go in and review my reviews. Um, and that's just to make sure that we're doing the best job that we can with any medical calls, and we're, you know, doubly backed up through them that we're doing our job and they're doing their job, so.
Do we have any money in our budgets out there for, what we're doing at all, pretty much been spent already?
I was wondering, you know, if we ever find out if there was anything wrong remaining. There's like maybe two thousand left out of that thing, so.
So with that, all the lawsuit money with the state that we had gotten, there might be about two thousand there that we can apply to that, which it helps. Um, you know, that's a, I, I guess, I don't know with Connecting Point, if there is anything that we could do where it would be a credit type thing where we make payments to them. I know we got it with Zerker, but I don't know if Connecting Point does anything like that.
Well, with Zerker, we, we went through the bank.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, I know that's a pretty good amount, but. You know, I think we got by pretty good with that radio. You know, that stuff was all very, that was mandatory upgrades that have to be done with the software and with, um, the radios for P T R back compatibility, so, I mean, we got lucky with that amount, but, you know, twenty-one thousand still, still hurts.
But the key is on the import and port. This was just the kind of thing we could look at taking out of those souls here.
We're gonna have to supplement the budget to take care of it. I mean, that's, you know, to your credit, you shop and shop and shop, whether it's vehicles or office chairs or whatever. And, uh, this is, this is one of the benefits for saving a few hundred bucks here, and all of a sudden we've saved thousands of dollars, so. Something like this, you don't have a lot of options.
Yeah, and anyway, I've tried to rack my brain a little bit each now, trying to figure out the best, you know, if there was other alternatives or if, you know, there was another way that we could do this by patching things together. You know, we talked about the possibility of adding some, you know, external data storage to some of the computers and the server, and we're putting a bandaid on something we're gonna have to look at doing again. I mean, it's, with that server being as old as this and functioning the way it is, you know, we're still gonna be looking at spending the same amount the next couple of years. Plus, we're gonna be putting the money into whatever we're putting in now, you know, to just do those captions to make it semi-functional. But, um, yeah, I just, I guess, I've worked with them, and I've talked to all the analytics agencies and everything to see their viewpoint on this pro Q A project. And everybody's just, you know, we're expressing how important it is that we do actually do this. You know, obviously, that, that grant money is already applied to it and stuff, and I feel like this is a super important part of this.
Yeah, he said, I would make a motion to supplement the budget.
Yeah, so you, you need the fourteen and not the twenty-one, is that, do I understand this right?
So, we got, with that, that part, the radio project funding, we've gotten, you know, project total was a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Um, what was remaining after that, after the, um, overall grant, you know, completing everything, there was five thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars left over that wasn't covered. Um, and that's with some of the supplies, installation and stuff like that. That was kinda the remaining there. Um, and it'll last, we kind of talked about there being that possibility of seventeen thousand for that that wasn't gonna be covered, but we got that covered with the nine-one-one project funding. So we didn't have to worry about that, but then it kinda came back and got us in another way. So, but I feel like, you know, after, you know, I've talked to every part of these projects and stuff, every person involved in it, and this would be the last, you know, the last thing that should even possibly come up with anything to finalize these. We're actually looking at a, um, completion date for the radio software at the end of this month. We're supposed to be installing it in March, and then the pro Q A is kind of an ongoing project, but we've already done the tech emails and everything. This is the last piece that would be kinda needed for that, but so it totally would be the twenty-one thousand, including the L F with the radio software and pro Q A. And like I said, it's not just for these projects. It's also updating the sheriff's office to getting their server to where it needs to be to function and backup all that data.
There isn't gonna be additional expenses now when we, when we, um, change the highway department, communication from.
If there is, it would maybe be, and I guess I don't know what they do as far as.
But not in your department.
No, no, no. Or that's gonna be out there. That's just gonna be them getting themselves on a separate repeater. Yeah, we'll be completely good there. And I've already notified the people doing our work on our radio, getting that programmed and everything, that that's gonna be a change in the future, so they're already aware of that. Um, you know, just making sure that they're taken off of that, so we're not hearing them, but. Yeah, it, it won't be any charges for us at all.
All right, Don need the motion to supplement the budget?
Can you just make a motion right now to purchase, to allow her to purchase this?
Sure, okay.
The supplement, we'll have to advertise that, so that'll come later.
Okay. Motion by Carlson to approve the purchase. Very good. Number is a second by Commissioner Regal. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
There is also a possibility, um, like they said, if there is any remaining nine-one-one project funding at the end of the year, we have the, um, options to put in for paying for unpaid expenses. So if there is that option, and I keep watching for anything like that, that if we can go back and get reimbursed for some of us, since it is part of that full scope that we got someone up funding from, that we can go back and try to do that as well, so.
So can we hold off not supplementing the budget?
No, we're not. I won't, yeah, break yet.
I mean, at the end of the year.
Right.
And I can keep you guys updated on, you know, they, they should be able to know, you know, they will take applications to see what they've got coming in for projects and stuff, and then at the end of the year, let me know, and I'm, I'm gonna keep them tabs with that to make sure, but.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a little?
We're gonna take a little break here.
Have a great night.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, see what, what kinda happened was, this, this guy, he's over there, he's got the flat tire, he's over, he's kind of, he's like, half over the, over the car. Where should, where, where should, well, according to the driver of the semi, he stopped, he stopped inside his car, and he tried to get over, but there was somebody, somebody beside him. He tried to slow down, and we were just like, we passed him, it wasn't hurrying enough, incapacitating. We looked at him, and we looked at him. He wants to kinda grab him, give him a tip, get over, and he was really strong.
The fly in here, my goodness. Pick up, pick up.
Did you get your second shot done?
Uh, Thursday.
Oh, this coming Thursday? I thought it was last week.
No, and then it turns out, it's, you know, with the snow coming, I gotta be down in Sioux Falls, so I don't know. I gotta call them, see if I can change my dates or maybe go down Wednesday morning and get down, and then come home, so.
Did you, this would be late?
Yeah. Yeah, they end up just being faster, so I just thought, well, as long as they're willing to do it, sure.
He certainly hasn't had a shot.
Yeah, he got, he got his, uh, last Thursday, his first one.
Oh, he did?
Yep. Saw a smiling face on Facebook.
Did you have any suggestions for your second shot?
She's got a nurse here. Just asking a question. Ask Pam. She said she's talking to you.
Yeah, I kind of just.
This one here, they said he wasn't eligible.
I've come by, reimbursed. The first one, I always had a silly reaction for the first one.
Why? She said.
The next day I was like.
Didn't qualify with it. But they didn't reimburse me seventeen hundred dollars. Please give this scenario, cause it was a special test. It was in a test. This company's one that does it, and they don't want to compete. So they sent me a letter and said, uh, we're gonna need all, all, plan themselves up. They said, if you get a, a check from you, just send that check along with this to that company. Well, I got the check first, the seventeen hundred dollars. Put it in my bank, so I definitely wrapped it, but, I mean, it's a covered expense, because the interest is gonna be three, seventeen hundred, a total of four, three.
Not, not just here, but.
So I, and I, I guess my. So I, and I, I guess my question too, why wasn't it just as, once we paid our sixty-two fifty, why wouldn't it automatically?
Because now, according to, I do this.
Well, they don't, I, they don't know. I was reading that.
See, I still didn't know that, Bill.
How long the, the.
For this, which they said, well, they're gonna send it to me, but I got this before I got that. Yeah, they did reverse seventeen hundred dollars, so I'll be responsible. We'll do the next one.
They say, well, six months, because of the.
Yeah, that's your best, but, it's right now, it's just light that power on, if it's effective or not.
We'll, we'll check that out.
Absolutely, that's fair.
Yeah, we'll run it through, and then.
Well, but she already ran it through at the last month.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So this is having to be run again, if it's reversed?
Then we'd have, yeah, then we'd have to. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Real or your mark?
Sounds like, maybe we'll check.
Well, rather than have her take that out.
Okay, the other ones are the interim, that's that twenty-two hundred dollars.
We'll search for that, and then we can check on this, is what I'm saying. And we can all, this is covered, you'll then be able to give me another check.
Yeah, yes, I, yeah, absolutely, so. Do you want that, or do you want to give the camera?
Is this yours?
Well, that's your guy's.
Okay.
Okay. Another chairman, I guess.
They don't have those tests, kits in at the nurse's office. We could go on the site and order a home test.
That, that takes a couple of weeks, I suppose, doesn't it?
Yeah, and then you, and then when you do it, you have to do it on Zoom.
You have to do it on.
You have to send your picture and request form.
Oh, really?
And so when you do it for the home test, you have to do it on Zoom, so they can see your face, the same face.
Oh, really, okay, don't trust anybody, huh?
Yeah, and then, and then to make sure you're doing it right, 'cause my son and daughter-in-law in the cities do that.
Actually, it might just be worse if they asked for the hospital, because what they weren't doing six weeks ago, they might be doing now, so.
Exactly.
I'll check with you. How much time are you gonna give me? Was it ten minutes?
No, no, you get a half, no, you get a half.
I got certain things on my phone. Okay. Are we ready? We are ready. Okay, uh, I won a court case, I sued the county, but they couldn't randomly go up ten percent on all the landowners and all of the tax takers in Roberts County, am I right? Everybody agree on one idea?
They went five out of sixteen that you applied for.
What's that?
Did you win only five of the sixteen that you applied for? Or sixteen properties that you took?
I won, the state said you cannot charge ten percent, go up on all properties ten percent, am I right? Do you guys agree to that or not?
I guess I was, I was of the belief that you had sixteen properties that you questioned.
No, I questioned whether or not you could go up ten percent legally.
Well, the state only.
Ruled on six.
Ruled on five or six of them, correct?
No.
In your favor?
They ruled on the ten percent. They said it was against the law to randomly go up on all of my properties ten percent. You guys agree to that?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't think, that wasn't my understanding, they ruled on those six properties.
No, they ruled on the ten percent.
On those six properties?
No, yeah, no, on all, all my properties, and Patty's properties, they ruled they couldn't go up ten percent on them.
Okay.
That's not my understanding, but.
Okay, well, that's what they ruled according to my attorney.
Right.
Okay, now, I have a question. You went up that ten percent, why did you go up to ten percent, what was the, what was the result of it?
Is that cases discussed? I don't understand why they're discussing that, that cases.
That's what I'm here to discuss, why did you go up to ten percent? It went up on all properties, not just mine, all the farmland, all the city land, all the homes along lakes, why did you go up ten percent? And what was the result of that ten percent it went up?
I don't think that's accurate.
Yeah, that's accurate. Okay, if you guys look into it, if you think it's not accurate, I'll come back next week, write this all down. Okay, now, here's what I was told, every person I talked to said their taxes went up ten percent.
No, their valuation went up ten percent.
No, but their taxes went up too.
That's not ten percent, the valuation's.
Yeah, every person I talked to, I'm not talking, I know every person in Roberts County saying, I talked to a hundred people, and everyone I talked to said their taxes went up ten percent, it should've. The valuation should've dropped ten percent and no more taxes were collected than the year before, would that be a correct statement?
All I can tell you is the valuation went up by ten percent, I didn't mean the taxes.
Yeah, their taxes all there.
I, I have to see it, but.
Okay, here's, here's what I believe happened. Here's what I believe happened. I believe that you wanted to collect taxes above and beyond the three percent you legally could collect. So you had the assessor go up ten percent on all properties, and you never dropped the mail levy ten percent, and actually, you could pull up three percent legal, but actually seven percent more money was collected than was allowed by law. That's what I believe happened. You wanna write that down, so you can dispute me on it next week? Just pull the papers, it's real obvious. Papers are out there. Okay, so nobody agrees with that, or doesn't disagree with anything at all?
What Sheri did was what was recommended to her by the state to do, that's, that's what we did before.
No, she said, in court, she said, Gordon asked her, did you do this on your own, or did the state say? She said, no, I did this on my own. That's in the trial.
So I guess I'll take it word for it.
No, she stayed, had nothing to do with it. That's in the trial, unless she perjured herself. Okay?
Okay.
And then, he asked Sheri, why did you go up? She said, I did an evaluation of the properties, and the town, the system was being assessed at sixty-six percent, and my state law's gotta be eighty-five. So I decided to go up ten percent, and the ten percent would've applied to Sisseton, Rossell, Eppington, you know, towns that aren't, that are incorporated, not the private land, okay? So, but she went up also on all the farmland and all the other properties. The farmland already had been assessed, because two years ago, Roberts County was called assessing all the assistant school district at sixty-six percent. So, and then the state came in and forced you guys to go up to eighty-five and figure it out. So she wouldn't have been doing it there as a real estate analysis. She was actually doing that for a different reason. Do you understand what I'm saying now? You wanna write that down? Okay, it'll be all I take. Okay, now. If. I asked Sheri, I had my quarter of land appealed last year, and were you on the, is any of you on the Board of Equalization?
No.
Oh, you're all on board, okay. Uh, I asked Sheri, do you have any input into the valuation of farmland, and she said no. Do you remember that? Well, I, she just went up ten percent on it to equalize the year before, she had input into it. Secondly, Sheri does have input into how farmland is assessed, am I right?
I understand, that's done by the state.
What's, what is done by the state is, each quarter section is valued according to each other quarter section. And then in a township, Sheri, the, the valuation is set at what a hundred percent of that would be. And then Sheri decides how much of that, otherwise, we couldn't have had all these townships and assistant school districts being assessed at sixty-six percent, instead of eighty-five. So the assessor had to put all of those on deliberately, that's sixty-six percent. And then the next assessor put it on, 'cause it's followed for ten years, then the next assessor, the assessor decides that value. If I'm wrong here, correct me next week.
Doesn't soil, the type of soil also play into this?
I, I can't understand you, can you, can you repeat what she said?
Does not soil have?
Yeah, here's what it's done.
No, Tom, just, that's my only comment.
The state sets the productivity of each quarter, so each quarter's assessed equally productivity-wise, but they don't set the total amount of money you're gonna tax for it, the assessor does that. She, they don't say that you've gotta assess it eighty-five, or sixty-six, or a hundred and five, they don't tell you that. So they, but by state law, they have to assess eighty-five to a hundred. And stills quarters, that, all of the school district were assessed at sixty-six. I actually believe that the, the county commissioners and the assessor went together to assess these properties low because of the school aid paid by the Native Americans. There's four million dollars more paid in state aid to the assistant school district because of that. They get four million from the deal, okay? So by state law, they have, I mean, by federal law, they have to use that money for the Indian, or have to use it in their school district. So even assessing at sixty-six percent the value of the land in assistant school district, they still had twelve thousand, eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars of per pupil. Rossell School District would be assessed at a hundred and some percent, actually above, or a minimum of a hundred percent in all of their farmland. They only had ninety-eight hundred dollars per, per pupil. So what, what, what would've happened if that farmland had all been assessed right, they would've collected way more in property taxes. Second reason I feel it was done was, when you assess under eighty-five percent, you collect way more state aid at sixty-six percent. So I believe it was done to get more state aid paid in. Which is a good, good, I agree with you guys, if you could pull it off, got us more state aid. But the real big problem was, when you assessed all that land at that low price, a, a twenty percent of, of, of valuation would've went down, because you were assessing that so low, so the rest of us paid twenty percent more in taxes. Okay, now we're gonna move on to.
I would like a timeout. I don't feel right sitting here, and we're discussing this, and you're saying Sheri said this, or Sheri did not do that. She needs to be part of this conversation, we don't know how she.
No, this is, this, this is, these are matters that are decided up in the courtroom. There, there, we're not gonna sit and debate who was right and who was wrong. This, these are matters that, these are matters that are decided in the courtroom.
Okay, can I speak my fact?
We've given you thirty minutes that you've asked for.
No, you're giving me six minutes.
Well, we, we.
Give me the rest of my.
We, we granted, we granted you thirty minutes, you'll be done at twelve-twenty.
I'll be done at twelve-twenty.
Right, so continue on.
This is the same argument you made towards last, is it not?
Yeah, I wanted to finish it. Okay, now, Sheri went out and had, because the county was assessing wrong, at fifty-five percent of actual true value, and had a coal stability, a bristle ratio of thirty, the state stepped in and said she needed to do something. Plus, we hadn't looked at properties in twenty-four years. So Sheri went out and looked at the properties along the lakes first, and in land not in subdivisions. When, the first year her assessment came out on that properties, the sales on them were thirteen point three million. The assessed value was six billion eight hundred thousand, fifty-four percent after she looked at it. And there was a lot of them. So I pulled them all, I actually did it in front of the Board of Equalization, I had Scott May of there. He showed you twenty properties that were being assessed at approximately half. It was on at five hundred, around two fifty, it was on at four, at around three hundred, it was on at one fifty, somebody knew what they were doing. Okay, now. The, Sheri put them all back on. She put all of them back on at just about the same value as, as the, as she had put them on before, even though a two hundred and fifty dollar profit property that she assessed at was sold for five hundred. Any of this you don't believe, you can go to the website of, uh, what's your website?
The state, the state website has all that information.
Yeah, what, what is the name of our website? Yours?
Oh, I'll put up, Citizens for Justice.
You can go to Sisters for Justice, it's all there. Okay, now, what was the result of Sheri's assessing all these properties wrong? The sixteen point, the thirteen points three million, and the six point eight million taxes should've been paid of sixty thousand dollars. Okay, now, let's pretend one out of thirty houses she assessed. So thirty times sixty thousand would be one point eight million was not paid in taxes by that group. Now, who paid that one point eight million? It wasn't pushed to the farmland, 'cause the farmland's already being assessed, and everybody made an agreement. It was pushed to the people in Sisseton, Rossell, Eppington, and the incorporated towns. I took the number of water meters in the three towns, and I divided, there's eight hundred of them. So every person that was had a water meter in this area would've paid two thousand twenty-two dollars. Times two thousand twenty-two, times eight hundred, it's one point eight million. So that was all pushed onto those people. Just like when the farmland was assessed, it was all pushed onto the rest of us. Okay, you can look this all up now. It's, I showed it all to you guys at the deal with Scott May, I showed, I showed you all of that. Do you remember that?
Scott was on the phone last year, he didn't look in front, it's like he was on.
Yeah, I had Scott give it all to you, and I had him show you all that. Okay? Now, as far as I understand, first the assessor, uh, well, let's, let's go one step further. Does the assessor show any preference to anybody? When Lutheran Church lot was given to the, uh, Lutheran Church by the lady in North Dakota, I came here and told everybody about it, it was put on, she got a value of one million two hundred thousand dollars. The assessor put it on at thirty-eight thousand. Then, the, uh, Dollar General come and bought it, they paid ninety thousand five hundred.
For a portion.
Sheri then put the balance on at eighteen thousand. Even though she had a third of it sold for ninety, we got a million two here, she put it on at eighteen. And up in the corner, she wrote, because the mobile home lots were no longer there, she lowered. Okay, then, uh, what's her name, Jan, would buy that for seventy-five thousand. So Sheri then put the balance on at forty-five thousand. She then, uh, she then, they sold to the, uh, you don't wanna come on. That sold for eighty-five thousand, so we have ninety, seventy-five, eighty-five, it was two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And all of that was under tax rules for around fifteen, twelve, eighteen, who knows, always moving forward. I figured it out, it was about five thousand a year, seven thousand a year, the county paid out of taxes that shouldn't have been paid to Lutheran Church. So now, we've loosened this terrible giant, uh, evil on Roberts County. Because I went to court, and because you guys now know that you can assess properties at any value you want, and there's nothing anybody can do about it. By the time I went through the court system, it took two and a half years. The court is not a court, it's a, it's the same thing that you are, it's a body to set values. So the court set my values lower, but I'm not gonna get any money back that much. I'm out all those thousand, thousand dollars, plus I'm out the sixteen thousand in attorney's fees a case. Okay, so now, we have to run this, so now, let's pretend, somebody wants, this, this body wants to steal somebody's land. They assess it at a high price, they go to the court, it costs them sixteen thousand dollars to go through the, the legal system, takes two and a half years, meanwhile, they keep assessing it that, meanwhile, you gotta pay the taxes on it. So I'm gonna try to give you an example of how this might work. Doctor Staud called me, he owns the stabbing field, he paid fifty thousand for it. It was put on at fifty thousand for two, and the people previous to him paid a hundred for a few years earlier. So now Sheri goes out and looks at it, and she said, oh, she puts it on at two hundred and fifty thousand, five times what he paid for it. What's his taxes on that, seven thousand five hundred dollars? What's it costing to appeal to the court system, sixteen thousand dollars, now he's got twenty-three thousand in it. They do it two years or three years, so I told him, I said, Doctor Staud, this. So I told him, I said, "Dr. Scott, just give it to the companies they want it, because they deliberately are assessing it high to steal it from you." And that's what's going on. So now I find out that Sherri raised, uh, uh, my attorney, Dr. Go, I mean, my attorney Gordon Nielsen's taxes. He, she went out and looked at his house two years ago, certified that it was worth what it was. She raised it 130 percent this year without ever going back and looking at it or showing any value on it. She raised his office 70 percent. So all of a sudden, now I get a phone call from Brett Hanson. He said, "You know, you've got a real problem." He said, "Do you realize that Sherri raised all of my values 100 percent this year?" Now all of a sudden I'm finding out a lot of people up and down here have got their values. She went out and looked at them two years ago. Okay? Can anybody see that this woman does not absolutely have a clue how to assess? So now, I said, "Oh, let's go up to the subdivision up here then. Maybe she did something good and went up there and those houses up there." So I go up and see, he didn't want me to use his name, but I can, he said, "I can if you guys need it on." His house was assessed at 119,000 after Sherri got done with looking at it. He had paid 204,000 for eight years earlier. So now, he said, "Yeah, she left it at 119." Why did she go up on these other houses out here? And his was definitely being assessed for probably half again of what it was worth. Does anybody see that this person does not know how to assess properties? If I named any property she's ever assessed right, I can't. I actually had a board member I met on the street, I don't remember who it was, actually said to me, "Jim, there's not one property in Roberts County that's possibly being assessed right to any other property. You just need to pay your taxes and shut up." Well, I'm not going to pay my taxes and shut up. And you are right. You said it totally right. This is for the court, so I'm going to go to the sheriff's office now and I'm going to sign a complaint that you colluded along with the assessor to defraud people. You sign off saying that you knew what you're signing off on was legal. When I pointed out Scott May's depth, that Sherri went out and assessed those and assessed them at 55 percent when by law she asked to assess them at 85 and you watched her put them back on, you colluded with her to defraud the taxpayers of Roberts County. Also, when you went ahead and did the 10 percent and collected 7 percent more above and beyond what you could collect, you colluded to, to defy the laws of South Dakota and collect from Sherri. Then what happened? Who's to protect us? Well, we got the state of South Dakota. They're supposed to come in and withhold state aid if they see anybody doing what's going on in Roberts County. Totally illegal. Even the Supreme Court said it would be illegal. So what do they do? They say, "Oh, we're not going to force Roberts County to assess legally by withholding state aid to schools, which by law they have to or supposed to." So they go out and they advise a formula that says, "Oh, if Roberts County was assessing right, this would be the amount of state aid they would get," and they withhold that state aid. What did the state say to you on those four questions I asked them?
They said, they evaluated, evaluated and they changed it on.
I mean, did they give, did they ask why they did not hold state aid? I said, they're asking that.
I, no, they didn't say that.
Okay, did they say what the formula is for Roberts County?
They didn't say, there's no formula. They said-
Yeah, there is.
Well, I can't wait to tell you all this.
Okay, I'm saying they covered it up. That's what I need to know. Who is a big person here that's going to hold all the money when it all comes down to the losses? It's going to be, you guys did this, but the state allows you to do it. The state has a big pocket for it, not you, okay? So we're going to be able to go after the state. Now, when the sheriff comes, he's going to tell to you, now, this can be used against you in a court of law. I'm going to advise you guys all to maybe see an attorney, that maybe I'm not so full of bullshit as you're thinking I am. Okay? You guys maybe have criminal liability here, okay? And so you might want to think about it. And I'm trying to warn you. Gordon was so nice to you guys. He said, "Jim, I don't want to put those people in jail." But he was so nice. Well, I'm not being nice anymore because nobody's still correcting the problem. Okay? Okay. We'll see you next week. We'll let the sheriff come and say anything.
Yeah, what, we have an appointment next week at 11 o'clock. That's on our schedule of the hearing, so.
You what?
We already have an 11-
No, I say I'm not coming next week.
Oh, you're not coming? Okay.
All right, go sign your complaint.
Okay.
Did all of this was ill-
Take your stuff, take your stuff, move fast.
Thank you, guys. You, you need to see what happens. I saw Roy, you guys, you are a gentleman. Just came from that. I'm trying to be honest with you.
Okay.
Oh, really? I'm sincere. I'll see you later.
Thanks, thanks.
Please.
You are a gentleman.
Well, he had six minutes to spare, so I guess we will use that time. The burial application that had been circulated, we denied it last week and I think the board is of the opinion that we're not changing our minds. Is that, am I right there?
I don't know. I understand the plea, but I don't know how you make it, where, how you make an exception based on? I don't see, just because they started where you start. I don't see what I can.
And they're assets.
Yeah. And like I said, I understand the situation, but I don't know what we can do there.
All right, so there's no, there's no change there.
All right. Iowa 11, no?
I don't know on the energy audit that we had. I think we need maybe a little more time to digest that information. Do you want to take it up today?
No, because Doug has not seen this. He was supposed to get happy today. Let him review it and maybe set up time with Doug and come in and visit with us about it.
Well, on, on the guy's email, he said next on the 12. So there's no way that we can do anything.
No, no.
I guess you could invite him back to come on the 16th, huh? Are we going to be around?
Yeah, we're seven, eight, it's okay.
You want to invite him at a regular meeting?
Yeah, we do have that hearing on the 26th next week at 11 o'clock. That Sherri was changing, that was on that. On your own, no, uh, this is, that's following you. This is where you had your conversation. We were finding his own with the guy who was on the phone and the guy at Sisseton.
Oh, for the 109 property?
Yeah.
109 there?
They were changing to-
Oh, oh, okay.
So that's-
Come over to the highway over there, it's changed right now.
That is, that will be at 11 o'clock next Tuesday. And then the following week at 1 o'clock on the 23rd, that's when the ordinance 27, the changes that we talked to Todd about.
Can we fit her into the agenda?
I can see if he wants to call in.
He, I mean, if we give him a half hour.
Sure.
Huh, what do you think?
I would, I would like to, Doug can be part of that and maybe Doug talk to us first and give us his impression, then we talk to our tale.
So Jim won't be here next week, so we can-
He's done telling us until he sees us.
We can use, we can use his time slot.
Well, I don't know how long that 11 o'clock hearing, Sherri's different at the, Chuck. Whoever the guy was on the phone.
The guy was opposed to it.
To Lewoski?
Yeah.
I've, I've been to the property. I'm pretty familiar with it.
I remember.
I don't exactly read that.
I've got some photographs, so.
Well, and, and his objection was the fact that this guy was going to build more sheds and put stuff in it that he did before, it's in the granite rather. But that's not what he's doing in this past, was. He's asking to make the rest of it commercial, highly commercial. And the new buildings he proposed is, are already on that piece of property that's commercial, so I don't see what he has anything.
I think his objection was what was being in and what, if he was littering or all kinds of-
Yeah.
All kinds of, I couldn't see nothing.
No, I don't think so. Yeah, no, I don't think he believes it.
Yeah. With the conversations I've had with him, and there's been a couple of them, um, it, it did get, it did get sidetracked and he's, he's aware of that. That if there's, and the county doesn't have regulations in terms of, you know, if somebody's doing oil changes, what's going to happen if there's a spill out there? I think we can, I think we can talk through it. I, I looked at the property. The proposed building is going to be right where the, pretty much where the existing building is at, so. Um, I kind of encouraged him and he's got a nice setup there, a nice property. The house is well-kept. And I referred him to Soil Conservation Service and their tree planting program to eventually hide some of that if you don't want to look at it. And I, I think we'll get it resolved in, in short order there, so. Okay, we got that, we got that. What else do we have, Don, other than the bills?
No, I got it.
Anything else for discussion? You have something? Okay, imagine that. Tim makes a motion. Is there something to that motion? Tom, thank you. Any discussion on the bills that we haven't already?
There was a lot of them.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Yes, aye, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn today's meeting? Aye, thank you. Is there a second for the adjournment, Don? All in favor of that one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're done, thank you.
Oh, is it in?
It shouldn't be listed today.
Two calls, is that correct? Oh, okay, well, time for maybe we get picked up. Thank you. See, I go to Super House tomorrow, huh?
Well, my shop's on the road, I own the windows.
It's on tomorrow morning.
What's it, do you know?
Are you going out to the county or is that?
You know what, I've been out there, but I guess I can take, take a spin out there and just look where the-
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift for all your pond needs. Countryside aid, assisted living and memory care in Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton. Use our online banking to save you time. Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs. Water softeners that reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.